Good afternoon. Welcome to the regular board meeting, May 22nd, 2024. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 4:31. And do we have any public comment on closed session? We do not, so then we are going to roll call. Thank you. Roll call please.
Harrison Nakatani.
I'm here.
Trusty Funtitfud.
I'm here.
Trusty Abdole.
Here.
Trusty U.
Is. Yeah.
We'll be coming for open session and I have Trusty Katz on here.
And Trusty U will be via Zoom open session. Thank you. Sorry. Since we don't have any items for comment for closed session, we're gonna go to closed session. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, we're going to get started because we have the choir coming in just a few minutes and I'm just going to formally open and they're going to perform for us. Um, so I'm going to call this meeting to order at six twelve. Sorry for the delay. Uh, regular meeting, May twenty second, twenty twenty four. Could I, let's see. Yes, we're going to start with roll call again. Thank you.
President Nakata.
I am here.
Trustee Ternchitah.
Present.
Trustee Abdoli.
Present.
I am trustee Katz and I am present and trustee Yu is she still?
Still on group.
Okay, we'll be joining us.
Yes, we'll be joining us. Okay, do, let's see, I'm going to have a report up from closed session. I have one thing to report out. And that is, um, the item B one A conference of. Let's see, pursuant to California Government Code, section. Five four nine five seven point one, the board has approved settlement by a unanimous vote in the case of students in the Mill Valley School District. The terms include twenty nine thousand in reimbursement for educational and family legal expenses. Thank you. Uh, could I get a motion to approve the agenda? Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to roll call every vote because you need is?
She's not here yet, so I think we're fine until she arrives.
Until she arrives. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, you and he was going to take our governance norms and inspiration.
Skip it.
But we will skip that for now. And, um, I should expect the choir to roll in any minute.
I would, I would say we're okay moving forward with opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Two public comments, okay.
Right about the time.
Right about the time. So we'll take these two public comments and then the choir will come in and then we'll resume back to updates from MBTA, CSE or CSEA then MBTA. And recognition of all of our employees. Uh, let's see, we have Erica Dowell first and then Gina Fakin. And our trustee clock should be able to be seen from the lectern. Thank you. You can go here or here or there, it doesn't matter.
Uh, you heard it. She's distracted. Three minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, three minutes.
You, you got the clock? Okay, thank you.
Got it.
Different.
Okay, hi, my name is Erica Dowell. I'm a parent of an eighth or seventh grader and a teacher at Old Mill School for the past nineteen years. Um, I'm here to speak to you about the importance of our instructional assistance, um. Our AKA teacher aides. Um, students and teachers benefit greatly from their continued dedication and commitment to our students. And over the years, I've seen dozens of instructional assistants come and go. We've been fortunate to have a few who were exceptional. And we have been even more fortunate to retain some of these exceptional ones for many years. Um, and I want you to know that our instructional assistants are taking on more and more responsibilities. Um, they know students in all grade levels. They work with the students both in the classroom and on the playground, and they've come to know personal details about the students' lives. Um, instructional assistants have been working with small groups of students during targeted instruction. And they offer a consistency in small groups instruction that can't be provided with volunteers. They've attended trainings that teachers have not been able to attend due to sub shortages. And, uh, for example, in Sunday E or behavior interventions. My concern is that the people who are really, really great at supporting both students and teachers. And they're really amazing at balancing a wide range of responsibilities. Um, they should be compensated in a way that makes them feel valued. The district needs to take into consideration the current shortages of willing, available and qualified people out there and. Um, consider what are the demands of this position compared to jobs out there that pay more for less work. We have serious supervision problems at many school sites and our instructional assistants are required to take on the additional position of yard supervisor. Whether or not they want to, and then they are paid at a lower rate. They are in fact the same exact person with special skills and knowledge and yet they're paid as if they're just Joe Schmo coming in as yard duty. Um, and they also, since we've had to add on parent volunteers for lunch supervision. Um, in the past few years, the instructional assistant has been basically supervising the volunteers as well. Um, the volunteers are not trained in seizures or universal precautions. They don't know all the students. The only staff person on the lunchyard is the yard duty, which at Old Mill is just, um, one person per yard. Uh, I think if an instructional assistant is doing lunchtime yard duty, we're lucky to have them there and they should be paid at the same rate, not a lower one. Please consider this and consider the value that our instructional assistants add to the quality of schools here in Mill Valley.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, I want to call up Gina. I don't know what the, um, sorry, with the choir schedule though. Do we have a few minutes for the choir or do we need to perform now?
You can wait three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Gina. Uh, wherever you like.
Is this working? Uh, good evening, Dr. Kaufman. Board members and directors. Dr. Kaufman, I would like to express my sincere gratitude for your leadership in your mission of increasing MTSS and developing vertical articulation. These initiatives are key factors for success in any child's education. And the foundational blocks for developing intervention and special education programs for the most vulnerable children in our district. While we understand there is a grand plan, it would be valuable to engage your most valuable asset, teachers. Please engage us in the process and the plan and engage us, teachers, with those who understand the students and community. Your goal of maintaining transparency and compete community engagement requires an open, organic dialogue. The recent changes in staffing in our program at the middle school implemented without consultation. Have profoundly impacted our community. The resulting void in our school community is not just physical, but also emotional. It is crucial to understand that such decisions affect the students, staff and the entire community. We want to partner with you towards successful outcomes, so let us help you. Share your timeline, schedules and ex execution with us in an open. Pardon me, and open up opportunities for feedback and discussion. Yes, I know that this is maybe in your LCAP document, but the document is pages long and hard to read and has no flow chart. Again, we want you to be successful. Please say, stay true to your words, transparency and consistency. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to invite, oh. I'd like to invite the choir, please.
I'd like to provide a little bit of context as well. Um, we, we, uh, come on up, yes, please. We had anticipated at this point in our agenda, we'd be joining, um, and celebrating our retirees. We're a little bit early and they have an obligation to, uh. Be at another event, uh, across the, across the parking lot. So, um, we've asked them to come and, uh. Note that it's a little out of sync, um, with their superintendent's report slash recognition of.
Good evening. Hi, we're gonna get started because we have the choir coming in just a few minutes and I'm just going to formally open. And they're gonna perform for us. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order at six twelve. Sorry for the delay. Regular meeting, May twenty second, twenty twenty four. Could I, let's see. Yes, we're gonna start with roll call again. Thank you.
President Nakata.
I am here.
Trustee Ternchitah.
Present.
Trustee Abdali.
Present.
I am trustee Katz and I am present and trustee you is she still?
Still.
She's still on group. Okay, we'll be joining us.
Yes, we'll be joining us. Okay, do, let's see, I'm gonna have a report up from closed session. I have one thing to report out. And that is, um, then item B one A conference of. Let's see, pursuant to California Government Code, section. Five, four, nine, five, seven point one, the board has approved settlement by a unanimous vote. In the case of students in the Mill Valley School District, the terms include twenty nine thousand in reimbursement for educational and family legal expenses. Thank you. Uh, could I get a motion to approve the agenda? Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to roll call every vote because you need is?
She's not here yet, so I think we're fine until she arrives.
Until she arrives. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, you and he was going to take our governance norms and inspiration.
Skip it.
But we will skip that for now. And, um, I should expect the choir to roll in any minute.
I would, I would say we're okay moving forward with opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Two, two public comments. Okay.
Right about the time.
Right about the time. So we'll take these two public comments and then the choir will come in and then we'll resume back to updates from MBTA, CSE or CSEA then MBTA. And recognition of all of our employees. Uh, let's see, we have Erica Dowell first and then Gina Fakin. And our trustee clock should be able to be seen from the lectern. Thank you. You can go here or here or there. It doesn't matter.
Uh, you heard it.
Okay.
She's distracted. Three minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, three minutes.
You, you got the clock? Okay, thank you.
Got it.
Different.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Erica Dowell. I'm a parent of an eighth or seventh grader and a teacher at Old Mill School for the past nineteen years. Um, I'm here to speak to you about the importance of our instructional assistants. Um, uh, AKA teacher aides. Um, students and teachers benefit greatly from their continued dedication and commitment to our students. And over the years, I've seen dozens of instructional assistants come and go. We've been fortunate to have a few who were exceptional and we have been even more fortunate to retain some of these exceptional ones for many years. Um, and I want you to know that our instructional assistants are taking on more and more responsibilities. Um, they know students in all grade levels. They work with the students both in the classroom and on the playground. And they've come to know personal details about the students' lives. Um, instructional assistants have been working with small groups of students during targeted instruction. And they offer a consistency in small groups instruction that can't be provided with volunteers. They've attended trainings that teachers have not been able to attend due to sub shortages. And, uh, for example, in Sunday E or behavior interventions. My concern is that the people who are really, really great at supporting both students and teachers. And they're really amazing at balancing a wide range of responsibilities. Um, they should be compensated in a way that makes them feel valued. The district needs to take into consideration the current shortages of willing, available and qualified people out there and. Consider what are the demands of this position compared to jobs out there that pay more for less work. We have serious supervision problems at many school sites and our instructional assistants are required to take on the additional position of yard supervisor. Whether or not they want to, and then they are paid at a lower rate. They are in fact the same exact person with special skills and knowledge and yet they're paid as if they're just Joe Schmo coming in as yard duty. Um, and they also, since we've had to add on parent volunteers for lunch supervision. Um, in the past few years, the instructional assistant has been basically supervising the volunteers as well. Um, the volunteers are not trained in seizures or universal precautions. They don't know all the students. The only staff person on the lunchyard is the yard duty, which at Old Mill is just, um, one person per yard. Uh, I think if an instructional assistant is doing lunchtime yard duty, we're lucky to have them there. And they should be paid at the same rate, not a lower one. Please consider this and consider the value that our instructional assistants add to the quality of schools here in Mill Valley.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, I wanna call up Gina. I don't know what the, um, sorry, with the choir schedule though. Do we have a few minutes for the choir or do we need to perform now?
You can wait three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Gina. Uh, wherever you like.
Hello, is this working? Uh, good evening, Dr. Kaufman, board members and directors. Dr. Kaufman, I would like to express my sincere gratitude for your leadership in your mission of increasing MTSS and developing vertical articulation. These initiatives are key factors for success in any child's education. And the foundational blocks for developing intervention and special education programs for the most vulnerable children in our district. While we understand there is a grand plan, it would be valuable to engage your most valuable asset, teachers. Please engage us in the process and the plan and engage us, teachers, with those who understand the students and community. Your goal of maintaining transparency and compete, community engagement requires an open, organic dialogue. The recent changes in staffing in our program at the middle school implemented without consultation. Have profoundly impacted our community. The resulting void in our school community is not just physical, but also emotional. It is crucial to understand that such decisions affect the students, staff and the entire community. We want to partner with you towards successful outcomes, so let us help you. Share your timeline, schedules and ex execution with us in an open. Pardon me, and open up opportunities for feedback and discussion. Yes, I know that this is maybe in your LCAP document, but the document is pages long and hard to read and has no flow chart. Again, we want you to be successful. Please say, stay true to your words, transparency and consistency. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to invite, oh. I'd like to invite the choir, please.
I'd like to provide a little bit of context as well. We, we, uh, come on up. Yes, please. We had anticipated at this point in our agenda, we'd be be joining, um, and celebrating our retirees. We're a little bit early and they have an obligation to, uh, be at another event, uh, across the, across the parking lot. So, um, we've asked them to come and, uh, note that it's a little out of sync, um, with their superintendent's report slash recognition of retirees. But, and yours of service, but they are here for you, um, as a way of recognizing the amazing things that our staff have done. To create such amazing students as you are about to hear.
Hi, so the choir concert's at seven. And I just brought four represent, representatives of our group. And, um, these four girls have actually learned a barbershop quartet in a very short time. It's very complicated. But they kind of took upon themselves to rehearse and, um. We, we, we spent some time together. They worked on this by themselves and we're excited to share this with you. So our theme for our concert is American, both songs and spirituals. Those are barber shop quartet arrangement of a African-American spiritual. It's called Swing Down Cherry. And we have Tallulah, Claire, Ryan and Nola. I'm gonna slide them here. I'm gonna just learn behind them to, just in case anybody needs a note. All right, this is our debut performance, everyone. Right, debut.
Excellent job.
That was fabulous. Thank you. What? Oh, I think that, yeah. Thank you so much. That was fabulous. What a nice treat for our, you know, recognition of our employees. It seems kind of like, oh, won't, 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 now back to board business. I know, I'm sorry. We, we were a little late downstairs. Not that these next updates by any means hurt. It's just changing gears. We are now going to hear from CSEA and then MBTA. So I think Pat and Yiming are coming up. Thank you.
It's gonna be a hard act to follow there.
Yeah, that was, uh, pretty awesome.
Voice low. Can't match that.
That was, uh, very impressive. So, uh, hi, um, we're if, right at the point of, um, finishing, finishing up our contract negotiations with the district. And it was a one day process and, um, it was really, uh, a good partnership that it was. Non-competational and we went through our issues and solved them and the district had a, um, I forget her name, but she did a really good job. She was like, uh, yes, Esmeralda, I wanted to mention her. She was awesome. And, uh, it's the time of the year where we're getting ready to start. Doing all the work for the summer and we're working with, uh, Julio, our director and, um. There's sixteen of us, so we have a huge job ahead of us and, um. We're excited as he's gonna provide us some support with, uh, cleaning carpets and things and that will speed things up. And, um, you know, the schools have probably a ten year life expectancy for. Carpets, linoleum and, and paint and all of that needs to be done and, um, like Edna McGuire. Could use a little bit of a paint job and people say, oh, it's a new school, but it's actually, it's ten years old. And, you know, there's four hundred kids there every day, so. They could use an interior paint job and I think Julio and I are gonna go through the building and we're gonna kind of point that out to him. And other than that, do you have anything for Tech?
Yeah, uh, every year, uh, Tech's really busy, busy year in the whole year, in the summertime, you know, uh, but waiting for my director. Yeah. Hey, yeah, she's waiting for her leadership and then, uh, we're gonna do lots of work in the summertime. And we have others in on the union issue?
Uh, that's about it, I think.
Yeah, well, there, I know there's some issue with union member. We're probably discussing that with the district, but that's ongoing, but. We'll update maybe next time, so. Then that's, that's it, right?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you've all done an awesome job this year.
Thank you.
You publicly know that.
You are. I know, you too. He's such a softie. Um, hi, everyone. Uh, Julie can't be here today, but she says hello and she's obviously very sad not to be here. Um, and I'm reporting out on our behalf. Uh, first, we want to thank you for the recognition on the day of the employee as well as the appreciation donuts. Shout outs, appreciations and special treats always go a long way, but especially during the sprint to the finish of the school year. Thank you so much for your kind words and support this week and throughout the school year. As you know, it is the season for open house celebrations. MBTA members want to say congratulations to all of the Mill Valley students, educators, administrators and staff for another amazing year of learning in our classrooms. We hope that families were able to attend the celebration of learning at MBMS last week. And that they're planning to attend open house at their child's elementary school next week. It's Thursday at six PM. Mark your calendars. Uh, we hope you, you will also be able to attend at least one open house in your role as trustees. Open house is a great opportunity for parents and other community members to get a sense of the dynamic and engaging lessons and learning projects that students are engaged in year round. With an emphasis on standardized testing results, some people forget that student learning and knowledge is captured in so many different ways on a daily basis in the classroom. Open house is just one opportunity to see the diverse ways in which students demonstrate understanding and apply the information that they're learning in their classrooms. In addition to traditional classrooms being open, all sites also host their kiddo art show on open house night. Don't forget to stop by your site's art show to see all of the incredible kiddo sponsored art projects, which represent a wide variety of mediums and themes. As you may know, teachers work many extra hours beyond their contracted workday in the weeks leading up to open house to prepare their classrooms to showcase student learning. Every polished portfolio of student work and perfectly manicured bulletin board represents not only a great deal of student work and learning. But a lot of teacher work as well. Teachers work to design and scaffold each project so that all students are able to publish their work in a final draft form and show it off proudly at open house. From mounting work on construction paper for that perfect final touch. To spending hours giving feedback on student essays through Google Classroom, teachers have been working hard behind the scenes to make open house a celebratory event for all students. And we really truly hope the community enjoys their open house celebrations. I wanted to thank you all for acknowledging our retirees and longstanding employees tonight. One of the things that make, makes Mill Valley School District such a special place to teach and learn in is the longstanding tenure of so many of our educators and staff. During their long careers in Mill Valley, teachers and staff make a lasting impact on generations of students and form strong collaborative bonds with their fellow educators and staff members. The longer educators stay in their schools, the stronger sense of community around them and the greater their positive impact. I am incredibly proud to work alongside the teachers and staff members being honored tonight. Who have served Mill Valley students for a decade or longer, including our retirees. You've all made such an incredible mark on your school, your students and our district. I should be talking to you and we value you. Uh, MBTA members wish our retirees, Jay, Joe, Karen and Hashim all the best in their retirement. And before I leave tonight, on a, a little more of a serious note, I wanted to reference an editorial by Paul DePerna and Colin Ritter that was published in the Marinai J on Saturday. It was about the importance of acknowledging and working to abate teacher burnout. In addition to noting recent studies that capture educators' feelings on a national level about job satisfaction. The author of the editorial had several suggestions of what school districts can do to help teachers feel valued and supported. And I'd like to read some of the editorial to you tonight. DePerna and Ritter wrote that recent, recent research tells us that the appeal of the teaching profession and job satisfaction of teachers has been declining for years. To tackle those interconnected challenges, it is vital to tackle these issues in a three-pronged approach. First, policymakers can encourage more decentralized decision-making by revamping policies for more teacher freedom and reducing bureaucratic red tape. Second, school leaders would be wise to foster a culture of trust with teachers by valuing their skill sets and expertise. Providing more opportunities to be involved in curriculum decisions and other school decision-making processes. And finally, reducing bureaucratic constraints and granting greater control over teaching methods and assessments would restore teachers' sense of professional agency and dignity. They conclude by saying, the teacher morale crash is right in front of us. Current and prospective teachers alike appear turned off or burnt out by what they see happening in K through twelve education today. In both public and private sectors. It is essential for states, districts and schools to repair and overhaul the professional environment and incentives for teachers. We must ensure that they have the trust, respect and opportunities to thrive and fulfill their mission to educate the next generation. I read these excerpts to you tonight because it's more important now than ever to listen to teachers in Mill Valley. Not just about their perception of what is working and what is not, but also about their passions and what drives them as educators. We are at a critical juncture in many ways in Mill Valley School District. The K through five ELA adoption will begin in August. The audit of district office systems is still ongoing. There are essential vacancies that need to be filled in site and district administrative.
Classroom, room seventeen at Edna McGuire, second grade class and had five students come to talk with me. And their first question was, "Mr. McCord, are we in trouble?" And after I assured them that it wasn't, I just asked them to describe their teacher and maybe give some memories that they have. So they described her, and this is a group of five around me as they're getting amped up, as kind, funny, she never yells. Well, Mr. McCord, sometimes she yells. Well, no, she really doesn't, Mr. McCord. She doesn't yell, but she has a certain way of looking at you if you need it. Okay, so she jokes with us and April Fool's Day joking was highlighted for them, so I'm curious. We do fun projects. She's hardworking and she has to be with some of our students in our class, but we can't name names because that would be inappropriate. She helps our class a lot. She did girls lunches and boys lunches in the classroom and that was a great memory. She is loving. From my perspective, I see someone who just wants the best for her students and comes to work each day. And I'll add for forty years, from that perspective of wanting to help their students. There is a book, Lisa Manji picked them out. She knows our retirees well. This one is by Kate DiCamillo and it's Oris and Timble, The Beginning. There's a book plate in it, so I'm excited to see this in the library and who gets excited about this. This book is donated in honor of Karen Engel. Thank you for a lifetime devoted to education and teaching. Your humor, friendship and MacGyver skills made Edna McGuire a better community. Thanks, Karen. And then Hashim, who retired earlier this year. Here's the child development part. So I asked some fifth grade students and here's what they said. "Mr. Hashim, he's cool." "Mr. Hashim, he's cool." "Mr. Hashim, he's cool." And "Mr. Hashim, he's cool." So that would be four of our fifth grade boys. So just making sure we see a pattern there. Others, though, they added that he kept us safe. I thought that was a huge comment. He kept us safe. He smiles a lot. He is kind. He is helpful. He was always there. He served fifth graders and their teachers at Edna faithfully twenty-five or so years. His children attended Edna. Starting this fall, two of his grandchildren will be attending Edna. So he's obviously committed to Edna. From my perspective, Hashim is a friend, a mentor, a colleague of highest esteem and the embodiment of kindness. He is always, and I underlined always, willing to help, to fill in, to lift up and to provide support. Since his retirement earlier this year, which allowed him to move on to the new job of grandfathering full-time, we haven't been able to find his replacement. And Hashim, I'm not surprised by that at all. So the book selected for Hashim is Ali the Great and the Dinosaur Mistake by Sadia Farouki. And the plate says, "This book is donated in honor of Hashim Salabi. Thank you for twenty-five years of kindness and humility. We will remember your many lessons, including don't be afraid to ask questions or make mistakes. They help us grow." Congratulations.
And I just want to thank you all. It's been last year at this meeting, I think I was selected as the superintendent and I am absolutely as enthusiastic. I think I was in shock that last year at this time at just what amazing teachers, staff, classrooms, students, community we had. And I still think I'm in shock when I go in classrooms. It's just amazing. And I wish for all the children in this world that they could have what we have here in Mill Valley because it is an extraordinary place to learn and grow. And it is with gratitude and much appreciation to all of you who have committed your days and lives here. It is an avocation for so many of you and so many of us. And it makes a difference when you show up every day. And you know, there's no life greater spent than making a contribution every day when you go to work. So thank you all. And later this week, you might see a video coming forward that I attempted for recognition of staff. And for now, I'm hoping that we can just adjourn and take a quick break and socialize a bit and maybe have opportunities for us to help distribute certificates to those who are here. And just enjoy you. So again, thank you all so much for everything you do.
Yes, we will take a ten-minute recess to enjoy cookies and mint water? No cucumber water? Lemon water? Mint water, yes. But please, the refreshing water. Thank you. The cookies look. Adam, please turn your slip in.
Okay. I hope everyone enjoyed Cookies and Fancy Water. We are going to start in just a few seconds, minute? Uh, we have the consent agenda to approve and then we have Amplify CKLA Curriculum Adoption. I'm just kind of saying that out loud so Laura could hear me. I just, just a heads up. We've got, we got one thing to approve and then um, we'll have you up. Okay, so we will resume at seven oh one and we have our consent agenda. Do we have any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Nope. Could I get a motion to approve it?
So moved.
A second, second. Thank you. Um, is you and he on? No. Okay, then all in favor?
I.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Uh, and thank you Laura. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your, your cookie fancy cookie fancy water.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, sure. Dr. Kaufman will introduce the item.
So we are very happy to share with you this evening our recommendation for our English Language Arts Curriculum Adoption and our program overview. All right, so um, we are giving the overview of the curriculum that we've been talking about for the last couple of months. And um, next slide please. Over the course of this presentation, we'll do a quick reminder for the audience of people that are my dear friends and don't want to listen to a single word I have to say right now that are not listening in the back. Um, about structured literacy, CKLA, um, what getting more into the meat of what this curriculum offers and some next steps. And we saw this last time, but it was just another reminder of um, where how we got to this place and that is that in two thousand nineteen twenty, there is a Kido mini grant, if we can just um, push through because there are different, thank you, um, that that was our really kind of the inception of our structured literacy journey. And then getting us through this year where we piloted the curriculum. And then the very exciting data overviews from last time that through this journey, it's worth reiterating that students exposed to phonics in grades K through three increasingly reach standards exceeded on state tests. As a side note, I worked with the TLL teachers this morning and went through the presentation from last time. Um, because they also are sick of listening to me talk all the time, so they didn't hear it the first time. And um, they were so excited to see the data of how well our students are doing based on this approach and of course their hard work. Um, students whose parents have high school and some college education are making the greatest gains, which is helping to shrink the equity gap. And students that have parents who have higher levels of education are also making great gains. And um, we're seeing the most amount of significant um, improvement in those classrooms that are really embracing the structured literacy approach. And um, getting some really good coaching. Bless you. Um, just another very quick recap, the three, um, these are the three curricula that we piloted this year and their timelines. And we used um, the rubric and a data um, dialogue protocol to evaluate the three curricula to come up with our final recommendation. Lots of clicks through, sorry. And then finally, when looking at structured literacy, CKLA Amplify was um, had the highest scores out of the three that we piloted. So, that brings us to what is CKLA? And educators use ed reports quite often to evaluate different curriculum and um, they're a uh, independent organization that um, that evaluates um, options for public, for, for all educators. And the highest that you can have is green or meets expectations and CKLA does meet expectations according to ed reports. So that's a one data point, one positive. And the program structure itself is um, I think maybe a year ago, we did a presentation on the reading rope and what structured literacy is. And so this is a model of that. Um, the Edna McGuire Tosha has a literal rope in her classroom, which is really cool. To show exactly how all these things come together. Um, and so I'm just going to dive into a little bit of a few pieces of what is in this curriculum and um, in this program structure. So next slide please. Okey dokey. So um, I think, can you go back one slide please? Thank you. So this curriculum is based on two main ideas and the first one is that it is knowledge based and I'm going to get into that a little bit in the next slide. And the other thing is that it is really strong in foundational skills. And so that's all the decoding and encoding. Some things I think that trustee Sirson Taj brought up last time. Um, it has that explicit instruction of those foundational skills. And then the next slide please. And then the knowledge strand is, is part of what CKLA is. So it um, CKLA stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts. And this is an approach that really helps bridge the equity gap in that the idea is that people learn things when they know things. So you build your knowledge on prior knowledge. So the more you know, the more you can learn. And so if you have students that come into a system that don't have as much knowledge as others, they're at a disadvantage. So the idea of core knowledge is that all students are explicitly taught pieces of knowledge. So if you think about like um, if a sports broadcaster says something like, it's a real Cinderella story. If you don't know what Cinderella story is, you don't have the context to understand what they're talking about. And a sports broadcaster isn't going to stop and explain to the public, this is what it means, that's why I use that reference, so on and so forth. So the idea behind this is that all students are given the same knowledge in a scaffolding approach that is repeated year after year after year. It is going to be a shift for some of our teachers in that when they'll look at, they'll be doing maybe a language arts um, lesson in second grade and there might be some pieces of knowledge that kids might study more in depth, let's say in sixth grade, but they'll be exposed to it in second grade. And the idea is they're exposed to it, then they're exposed to it again and exposed to it again in all the grades so that by the time they get to sixth grade social studies, that then they've really embodied what those words mean. So it's a very purposeful approach, but it is different than what we have done um, in the past. So our teachers that were on the pilot committee, some of whom have left the building, um, but we're here. Shared some of at the end of the process, shared some of the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities of this curriculum. What they really like and what it said, set this one aside from all the others is the ease of use for the teachers. There's a digital component that's kind of like a pu- a plug and play that is super easy for the teachers. And this was a very dedicated group of teachers. We kind of put them through the wringer this year with three different curricula. Their students had to adapt to them. Um, and so they were very grateful to have one that was so simple that they could just open up and use. The students were also highly engaged. So when, when we walked classrooms where um, CKLA was being piloted, the, the kids were all in. So it was really fun to see. Really rich, challenging texts, very well organized. That was a big difference than some of the others. And really quality decodable readers, which is important in a structured literacy program. The weakness is, I think I brought this up last time, is that the, some of the cultural appropriateness seems a little off. And we noticed that in all of the curricula that we looked at. So we originally, we looked at ten, then we narrowed it down to five, then we narrowed it down to three and they all had that in common. And it's, I think part of it is just the cycle of where we're at in the state of California in two thousand twenty eight. They'll do another state adoption and I'm imagining that many of these publishers will, excuse me, many of these publishers will do a better job of including more culturally relevant pieces. Um, so that's one of the things that we're going to look at. We have some of the teachers that, that piloted it that had some ideas on how to kind of improve and address those issues. So like, if they're doing a unit and it's, it references Santa Claus, they had some ideas of either omitting Santa or adding, here are some other perspectives or other celebrations or other references that you might see during this time of year. Thank you. The writing units lacked stamina. Um, this is also another shift. So with CKLA, and this is the way that curriculum is going in general, is that it is very specific writing prompts to write for evidence. And so they are intended to be shorter. But that's a shift from the um, writing workshop model where kids would just write and write and write for long periods of time. But they, um, some of the teachers found that to be a weakness. Um, and just time, it just takes a lot of time to do the full lesson. So when we talked about what did they need to be successful with this, it all came down to the same thing that all teachers always need. It's time. It's preparation, it's training and it's coaching. So we have some plans for that. And we have optional summer training. Um, and that would be paid for teachers that have the capacity. We know that not everyone's going to be able to do those things. But um, they, they will have the opportunity to if they are around to participate in optional summer training. And then during our professional development days next fall, we will have required professional development. And then we'll have ongoing um, support for structured literacy in general so that our teachers can, for those that maybe were a little hesitant at first can get the training that they need. Or for those that are all on board but just have some questions, some tweaking, um, we'll have that available for them. So the money. Curriculum is not cheap. And the cost is increasing year over year with printing and shipping and paper. Especially since COVID, we saw a steep increase in the cost of curriculum in general. So we asked the publishers for quote, for three years, five years and eight years. And the cost per year is just a little quick math at the bottom. And that's about the cost that we see. That's in the range of costs that we see for most curricula on average per year. It's somewhere around the hundred thousand dollar range can be. And so the eight-year option gives us the best bang for our buck. With money, we had set aside, there was some um, unused restricted Lotto money, some curricular money that had been set aside for the, for an anticipation of a curriculum adoption. So we have close to the full amount of if we went with the eight-year plan. Now I feel like I'm a car salesman. Um, the net cost, if you look over to the eight-year column, seven hundred seventeen thousand, should we go with that model? Um, we, if we have six hundred eighty-four thousand set aside, it would be like thirty-four thousand or so out of pocket, so to say. So our recommendation is the eight-year because of the um, the overall savings of year over year. Also to give our teachers time to really commit to the program and get to know it really well. Something that we hear a lot in Mill Valley is that we try things, we get excited about it, then we drop it and then we try something else and it can be very disorienting. And so just to commit to one thing and really get to know it and know its strengths and weaknesses. Um, so that's our recommendation there. So this is a recap of our timeline. And so tonight, you're receiving more information on the specific curriculum. And then at the next board meeting, um, you'll have the opportunity to vote on the recommendation. And that is the conclusion. So I'm available for any questions you might have.
Um, before, oh, yeah, before we open up for public hearing, we'll just do, right? Or is public hearing part of our questions? Okay, go ahead. Trust me, yes.
So you had mentioned with the cultural relevance that that's across the board shortcoming. As they catch up, as all the publishers catch up with where we all are. Is that going to be an additional investment at some point? Is that something that you would anticipate would be updated through the digital offerings? Just curious in terms of the incremental costs that we might see over the course of the years. A lot can happen in the next eight years.
It's a really good question and it's something that, it's a question that I have out to the publishers and I'm waiting on the response. So before um, the next board meeting, we'll have an answer of if we commit to a long, for any of them, if they were to update or, or to republish, would we get the new materials at the same cost because we've made the commitment? Or would they charge us and what would that look like? So I will have that information for you before the next meeting.
Thank you. And just one, one more thing, just a comment. Um, I think I had reached out to you about the book, The Knowledge Gap, last year. Because I read it as recommended new teacher reading and got really excited and inspired by it and um, just looking through the presentation and seeing that this is not a standalone, just focused on these skills, but to your point about incorporating knowledge and how you build that knowledge base. So pulling in science, it's social studies and all of these things that our children should be learning about. It feels much more comprehensive in terms of addressing what we want to be delivering to kids. And so I, I'm very excited about it. So appreciate all the efforts that have been put into finding this. Thank you.
Any other questions? No?
I just want to say thank you for the presentation. It was very easy to follow. It sounds uh, exciting and uh, do we uh, have a sense of how the teachers feel about an eight-year commitment? Can you speak to that a bit?
Um, I don't have a sense of that yet, but that's something that we can also absolutely reach out and get some more information on before the next board meeting.
I do agree with you that, you know, a, a long-term commitment um, just helps because things take, take a while to embed. Uh, but I'd be interested in hearing what the teachers have to say. And this is a K eight program or just K five?
It's a K five.
Okay.
Uh, Dr. Kaufman, did you?
Yeah, I don't know.
Any, no.
I just wanted to capture a couple of things. Typically, when you do an option, it's a seven-year cycle because that's how the state rolls it out. Uh, in this case, we'll be investing not only about eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars in the curriculum itself, but then additionally, we're planning to do parallel support for implementation with Glean um, and the publisher, but e- especially Glean. And so I think there's another, you know, significant annual investment for building our chops around the implementation for the first, you know, two or three years. And then of course, you know, you're looking at adding, how do you enhance the writing program, like certain elements? How do we integrate more with science? So I think the, the seven-year cycle is usually how we kind of get to mastery and then in, in some ways exhaustion of the program and the next iteration. So uh, I, I think that's generally the practice and that's why they price it the way they do. We're a little out of sync with an adoption cycle, but we also anticipate adopting math. And so that's another reason why we would want to commit to an eight-year adoption so that as the new math framework and the frameworks out, but the, the published curriculum around, you know, the new math program, potentially twenty-six, twenty-seven, we coming out twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So we want to make sure we maintain the capacity to implement this and then fully implement math and then look back and say, what do we need to refine, you know, in our practice? So that's also part of the, the thinking behind the eight years.
Uh, and then, you know, just quickly, um, we'll formally vote for this again in June, but uh, are we paying for it all at once? Is that the, is it like the cameras?
Yes.
Okay.
We budgeted for it.
Yeah. It's, yeah, I see that. I just didn't know if it was a yearly or not. Okay. Uh, well, um, then I think I will open up the public hearing portion. So I don't know what's my, no, here it is. Um, at seven nineteen, I will close this meeting and open up the public hearing for the curriculum adoption. Do we have any comments? We don't. So it's, I'll also close that meeting at seven nineteen and reopen our regular meeting. Thank you. Um, and then Kate, we next we have, thank you Laura. Uh, next we have Kate Spray, who will do the annual PD draft evaluation and survey results. And also an LCAP update. So thank you. Okay.
The LCAP is, is going to be a team effort. So Laura's. I took my, it's robust, endurance gun, I mean.
Okay. So first, I am here, Kate Sprague, Director of Educational Technology and Accountability. And the first presentation is the Professional Development Planning Update. So it overview and update of our planning around professional development or PD for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. Thank you. Every year, we look as a team at what professional learning opportunities we can offer our staff over the following year. And it's typically also aligned to our LCAP goals. As a reminder, our collective bargaining agreement with MBTA includes guidelines for how PD is determined, which are cited here on this slide. This year, as has been our practice the past few years, we provided an online survey. And to this year, time to complete the survey during a scheduled faculty meeting. We also left the survey open for several days for people who were unable to complete it during the provided time. We had one hundred and twenty-one responses to our survey, which is an increase from last year and represents probably about seventy-five percent. and represents probably about seventy-five percent of our certificated staff members, which is a great return rate for a survey. So that's awesome. This year's, next slide. Thank you. This year's survey requested input on professional development and meetings and collaboration. The PD feedback focused on summer learning opportunities and PD days during the year, as well as how teachers prefer to receive professional development. And also feedback specifically from our special education teaching team and our specialist teaching team, which is our groups like art, music, library, our counselors also fall into that. And then around meetings and collaboration, we, the feedback focused on Wednesday faculty meetings, including the frequency of those meetings. The focus of professional development Wednesdays, which are specific Wednesdays throughout the year when professional learning is offered. And also feedback on interest in communities of practice moving forward and some feedback on providers from this year. So some of our professional development providers are Glean with Jessica Hammond, Changing Perspectives with Sam Drazen, Critical Friends with Sinisha Tate, and Math Education with Leo Kostelnik. Next. Thank you. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the feedback was provided regarding the following full professional development days. The June and August days paid by the hour for teachers to select to attend if interested and able. That's including the CKLA days that Laura was talking about. August, new teacher training, which is something we offer to our new teachers every year. August, district-directed days. So those are the one and a half days that teachers return to work officially in August, the week before school starts. One and a half days, we work to provide professional learning or important updates. And the other one and a half days are for the teachers to work, work to prepare their classrooms, which of course they often spend more than one and a half days doing. It's a big task to ready their classrooms. The November and January professional development days, one in November and one in January. The Wednesday district-directed meetings, which are five Wednesdays throughout the year. And then the TK and K teaching pyramid focused specifically for those teachers, for those unique grades and the needs of the teachers and learners in those grades. The next slide is going to more detail on these offerings. So specifically related to June and August, the feedback showed interest in the district providing the following offerings for teachers to select to attend. CKLA, the new ELA curriculum you just heard about, Apple, provided by Apple Educators. CPR training for our teachers. And for these sessions, teachers who attend will be paid at the contractually agreed upon extra duty hourly rate. Of course, we know that not all teachers are free during the summer. So certainly we know there is interest around this and, and not necessarily reflective of everyone's interest in this. But happy to offer it for those people who are able to attend. For the full day professional development, that again is one and a half days in August, one in November, and one in January. For all teachers, along the bottom there, we will ensure that they receive the safety training and information, especially related to the items listed there, stop the bleed kits, our N one-one protocol, EpiPen training, AEDs and Narcan access at school, the seizure protocol, intruder protocol, and a camera overview, because we will hopefully have those newly installed. Then the elementary school, as I mentioned, TK and K will focus on the teaching pyramid. And the other K five teachers will focus on the ELA curriculum training with CKLA and having planning time around that as well. And for the middle school, currently, the plan is positive behavioral interventions and support, or PBIS, training and planning time for them as well. Another thing that we asked was about professional development delivery preferences specifically related to the elementary ELA, CKLA curriculum implementation. So we can best address the needs of our teachers as they undertake to learn and teach this hopefully newly adopted curriculum. The number one preference overwhelmingly was release time, which is teachers having the opportunity to get that time to go over materials, collaborate with their colleagues, and plan how to implement those materials, even organize those materials as well. Because sometimes it comes in giant boxes in however it will fit, not how it's meant to, you know, you're meant to go through it. The number two preference was individual coaching, when teachers are provided coaching from someone else related to teaching the new curriculum. We did provide five options for preference. The distant third and fourth preferences were expert observation and peer observation, and we did force rank. So, you know, these are also valuable things that, you know, we might have had interest in as well. But the, the number one priority was that release time for our teachers. For our professional development district Wednesday focuses for the middle school, we stated that the focus, as aligned with the LCAP, was multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS, and the implementation of articulated coherent core curriculum. While also exploring options for a school-wide focus at the middle school over the next three years. Hoping that our goal could be to implement a unifying system-wide instructional focus, similarly to the ELA implementation at the elementary school. Understanding that the middle school will be transitioning again now to a new leader, as well as working through a move to a temporary site, teaching on that site, and then moving back to a new school. So we had twenty-five responses from our middle school staff. Of that twenty-five, ten identified PBIS as an interest and preference for the focus, that positive behavioral interventions and supports. And the other, the other responses were spread out among different individual ideas and priorities. This clearly shows that while there is interest in PBIS, we certainly need our next steps to be to discuss further with the middle school staff to ensure that we're meeting their needs. And especially as we go through more transitions there, that the, the plans include them in that planning. So then we also wanted to provide a preview of the, the feedback on the professional development providers we've been working with over the past few years. I mentioned those four before. This table shows first, in the first column, after the provider's name, how many people responded regarding each provider. We asked that they, those respondents represent those who participated with that specific provider in one way or another. So it could have been a coaching session, could have been a professional development session, could have been, in the case of the math, using the common formative assessments that Leo helped our teams build. And we then asked three questions of the participants, both as a quantitative rating and qualitative open-ended response. So please rate your satisfaction with the professional learning opportunity. That's the next column. How would you rate the new knowledge and skills you acquired? That's the second column of percentages. And the final column, how would you rate the impact on student learning and well-being? Those were rated on a four-point scale, and the percentages here represent the three or four. So to most, the highest or most rank, ranking around those. So we also asked about communities of practice. A community of practice is a cohort of individuals who come together to learn and work in specific areas of district priorities. Our ideas surrounding these are that they would be paid after school, likely monthly, and for about ninety minutes. So again, already, we limit who may have the availability to do this based on other life commitments of our teachers. But we believe it's important to offer these to the extent that people are able to attend. And the following three were identified by staff as those they were most interested in participating in. Culturally relevant pedagogy, universal design for learning, and executive functioning, social pragmatics, and behavior interventions. Our goal was to run communities of practice when at least twenty staff members showed interest in that. Again, they don't, these numbers don't necessarily capture all of the staff members who would be interested in this. So maybe we'll be able to pick up a few as we set dates and people know what the next year will bring for them. But also, we know that this includes those who feel they would be able to commit to participating in a community of practice structured this way on these topics. And of course, this is also why we work to provide professional learning and development in a variety of ways throughout the school year, on the days that are workdays, outside of that, in the summer, and, and as many ways as possible. So regarding our specialists and special education team, we asked them not only about meetings, but also about professional learning, because the PD that we provide for our classroom teachers does not always apply directly to these groups. For all groups, job-alike meetings were identified as important throughout the year. That means when they meet with the people who have the same roles as them. So librarians meet together, the counselors meet together, the art teachers meet together. The librarians are also planning to take on diversity, equity, and inclusion professional development, specifically likely around a curriculum they are implementing in library classes next year. Counselors will likely move forward with supporting the implementation, implementation of safe-touch curriculum as we determine specifically what that will look like. And the TK five specialists in art, music, and PE requested a focus on teaching for young learners as we roll out more TK classrooms across our district. Our special education team also requests job-alike meetings and the opportunity for that, not only with their staffs at their sites, but also together as a team, because they do have unique roles. They also found legal updates provided at the beginning of last year helpful and would like more updates yearly. And then a regular schedule where they can collaborate and know they will be having those department-wide meetings. So finally, now that we have all of that feedback, our next task is to ensure that we are working to align that as best as possible in our LCAP, which also guides our budget. And so then, of course, ensuring that the budget includes the priorities and plans, and looking at contracts from providers for implementation moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions about this?
Well, I just want to make a comment. Thank you so much for all that comprehensive information. And I see a system of getting feedback that, you know, I, do. I'm interested in getting more data on, and I probably will be just anecdotal. I'll just say, hey, you know, what do you think? Because I think that that's critical and often missing. So in my experience. So thank you very much. And the other is, you know, I'm, can you speak a little bit about the middle school and how we might? I'm inferring. So say, hey, that's not true, or let me reframe it for you. But you know, how to get their feedback? I think, you know, they're masters in their sole curriculum. And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm ignorant as to whether they, they have common planning time. And is there a way that they can, you know, a, a system there that might, might be developed? Or has it already been there forever? And that's why I'm, you know, not hearing about it. Maybe you could speak a little bit about that.
I see Dr. Kaufman raising her hand, so I'll let her go first.
Yes, thank you.
One of the, one of the things we do before board meetings is hold a drop-in agenda review. And we had the great, actually, luxury of having two of our middle school teachers attend and give feedback. And so one of the areas of feedback that they gave was that the way we structured the survey, you had to get through all the elementary questions to get to the middle school questions. So they wanted a shorter, you know, like, give us the middle school question. And I think the other piece is really, I, I, right now with leadership transitions, there's just an opportunity for people to, you know, wait, wait to see where they are. And as, as Kate was speaking, I think there is a, a general interest and has been an interest. You know, we think of the work that's been focused on social emotional learning. First, it was, I want. Wayfinder, thank you. And then ruler, there isn't really space in the schedule to implement those things consistently. And I think what, what seems to be, you know, as we look at multi-tiered systems of support, we look in particular of a group of middle school, you know, young adolescents moving from one campus to the next campus, to the return to campus, that some of the positive behavior interventions and supports will be critical for that time as we learn to be safe, be respectful, be responsible in each of those environments with each other and with the, with the space. So I have a strong feeling that that will be a need and a focus just, just to manage transition with, with the students. But we, that is partly also why you'll see in the LCAP that we're, we're trying to really create some space for the middle school to look at redesign and sort of from a portrait of a graduate lens, which will hopefully build next fall. You know, what, what do they want to see for their students as we look at what a middle school program provides, you know, over the next few years? So they will be in construction in some ways, in the same way that the middle school will be in construction. So anyway, that's the general thinking. But I, I think in this case, it's a matter of, we need to revisit a survey that's simpler. And secondly, that they really want to know what, what they're getting in terms of their next leader in order to understand, you know, what's possible and what that person brings in terms of expertise.
And structurally, I would just add that the meeting where the time was given also ended up being timing-wise when they were learning about the change in leadership. And so, you know, they're just competing priorities, obviously, and a lot going on there that we need to be sure that we acknowledge and, and then regroup with them specifically.
Right. And I, I guess perhaps then, you know, there's a lot that will take time and energy that has nothing to do with what's actually happening with the curriculum and, and how to balance moving that forward. Because, you know, I, I don't know if my fellow board members feel the same way. I, I feel really grounded in like what we're doing at the elementary space. But curriculum-wise, except for me going into classrooms, I'm not clear about the coherence or integration, or how they actually talk to each other, what they do, like knowing more about just how that works from a pedagogical perspective, right? And then the, the system piece of that, I guess. But anyway, so I'm looking forward to that.
That sounds like a great idea for future board.
It, it could be, but I definitely don't want to even, you know, there's a lot like you've just articulated going on at the middle school. So just to kind of put that out there, I think kudos on all the good work that you've done. And that just opened up my mind to middle, you know, the middle school.
Uh, any, anyone, no other questions? Thank you very much. And I think we're gonna go.
Carol Stanning. So we will, I first want to introduce this gentleman to my left. For those of you who have not yet met him, he is Corey Reel. He is assisting us as our interim Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations. And he will play a starring role in LCAP Gulf War this evening. We will hopefully make this presentation as brief as we can. One of the, one of the facets of bringing forward a local, a local control accountability plan is that you need to have opportunities for public input. And while we have structured those over the course of the year, we also wanted to prepare our community for what is a very brief timeline from LCAP presentation on June sixth to LCAP adoption on June twelfth. So our goal this evening is to present, and I probably should make sure we send this also out in the Friday newsletter. An opportunity for anybody who wants to review this lengthy and comprehensive document to do so. Because we will be, our, our meeting is June sixth, and realistically, June seventh is the only day that we have to get feedback and post our agenda. So the purpose of this experiment this evening is to make sure we've done our due diligence. And I promise we won't do it again on June sixth. We'll just do the numbers. If there's any money left by the time we're done building the LCAP. You're supposed to laugh, Corey, but he's not thinking it's funny. So, so we will skip to slide seven. This is a review that people have seen multiple times here with us about our funding. And one slide back, I think. Is that slide seven? So just in, in our district, our primary purpose, when, or in any district, when you, when you develop an LCAP, the real purpose of the LCAP is to document what you're doing for students who are considered unduplicated. So students who are considered socially economically disadvantaged, English learners, foster and homeless youth. And for us, that is a small population, and yet a, a significant and important one. And so we are trying to answer the question as a community, you know, what are we doing in the eight state priority areas, which have been presented in multiple previous meetings, really to increase and improve services for the students who are generated this funding? Which in our case, they don't generate funding, but they, there's an allocation of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we should be showing in terms of increased and improved services for them. Next slide. So this came from a presentation that Scott, Scott Siegel, who you will also meet later, again, this later this evening, presented in our LCAP community forum around budget. And for us, you know, this is sort of an overview of our, of our budget and where, where our money comes from. And we, because of the size of our, of our population of unduplicated people, pupils, most of what we do is for all students, right? So we provide small schools, small class sizes. We try to avoid combination classes. We really want to attract and retain highly, highly qualified staff. We provide finite education. And we are taking on the implementation of seven TK classes, which is not a state requirement at this time. So our, our board and community have made a decision to allocate resources to provide early childhood education in as universal a manner as we can in the current state framework. So for us also, just a general picture for, you know, and as we look at a big picture of budget, and again, we'll, we'll be reviewing this a little bit more. But one of our goals is really to develop as a community to understand how do we develop our budget and allocate our resources. And in general, you know, most of our budget's personnel, and that's followed. And in general, you know, most of our budgets personnel and that's followed by operations like keeping the lights on and making sure water runs and. And as a, as a board, you'll also see later in the LCAP that, you know, we need to maintain the necessary reserves. In particular, our budget is uh maintained heavily uh through a parcel tax and community support and so. We as a system need to anticipate uh how we might cover those funds in our reserves should that. Tax not be renewed. Hopefully it will be, but again, part of what we're doing in our LCAP. Is trying to show the stewardship of community resources that will ensure community competence. So then what's left is sort of our discretionary for programs and, and that is the bulk of what we'll share with you this evening um in terms of goals. One, two, three and four. And then again, also trying to call out and capture what are those additional and improved. Services that we're providing for the unduplicated peoples. Next slide. So this is just a general overview of how that funding gets generated. Um, what we're supposed to do with it and uh what some of the requirements around uh. Really showing how we're, how we're supporting the unduplicated people. So for us, as I mentioned, it's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and. You know, we, we are cautioned that we need to really. Make sure that we're identifying specific targeted supports that are above and beyond. But also accessible to students. So providing things that are above and beyond, but require students who. You know, may need to be with their families after school because there is no transportation for them to and from our, our after-school programs, you know, that, that may not be. The appropriate option for them. So it's upon us to really figure out what can we provide. Available uh a child's immediate just-in-time need uh to make sure that our students who. Uh, require or may require additional support uh receive that support without having to uh. Do extra work to access those resources. Next slide. So I think it's Kate's turn.
Okay, so next we're going to go through the four goals and then we have a final slide that speaks to some of those increased and supplemental services that we're. We will also be including, but we wanted to first focus on the four goals uh that you've heard a lot about over monthly presentations. And um, and ensure that we go through uh providing the details on the slide. Our presentation tonight will focus on the overview or the kind of thesis statement about each one of those goals called the action. So goal one is access to excellent educational opportunities for all learners. And this means that Mill Valley School District students can expect a coherent, aligned and consistent educational experience in core content areas. Across grade levels and sites using evidence-based instructional materials and practices. So next we have actions that uh capture how we will do that. So the first action is required core program and staffing. Uh, speaking to schools being appropriately staffed and students receiving those core also called tier one instruction. From highly qualified personnel and that the same would be true district-wide, that our district-wide personnel are appropriately staffed for effective operations. And you can see in the other columns that we have uh more specifics about that, but again, that's provided for context not to go over in detail tonight. We're happy to answer questions at the end also. So the next goal is that instructional schedules will meet state, sorry, the next action will meet. Instruction, instructional schedules will meet state and or publisher recommended daily instructional minutes. For core academic language development and social emotional learning. And so for the elementary school core program, that's SEL, social emotional learning, science, social science, morning meeting, ELA, math. And PE and the middle school program, uh, you can see on the slides there, we have the core academic program. Um, and then also where the electives fit in in our current middle school schedules for grade six and seven and eight. The next action is that all students receive consistent standards-aligned TK through eight instruction using aligned state-approved. District-adopted, evidence-based instructional materials for core instructional and social emotional learning. We wanted to be sure that we called out specifically as best we can that the qualifications that we use as we're looking at uh what that instruction needs to look like in our classrooms. The next action uh is related to professional development and collaboration time for implementation of core curriculum and evidence-based. Instructional strategies. So here you'll see some of those things captured that we talked about in the PD survey. So things like release time for assessments. Things like uh amplify ELA, structured literacy, professional development and coaching. And again, trying to weave those things that we learned from our staff members into the LCAP plans as well. Continuing on that uh professional development, that professional development and collaboration time for implementation of core at curriculum and evidence-based. Instructional strategies will occur both through a multi-year focus as well as through faculty meeting time. Specifically for elementary school as well as for the middle school. And then finally, the final slide about this, uh, about professional development. Um, looking here at some of the ways that we plan to build instructional leadership at our sites. Through not only our instructional leaders in the principals and our district office staff, but also through instructional leadership teams. Um, through staff members at the site as well. Next action is instructional leadership and accountability for the LCAP and multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS implementation. So in looking at how those instructional leadership teams um with cross-disciplinary representation. Will help us be responsible for setting explicit expectations related to multi-tiered systems of support, which means that we are. Seeing how students are growing, figuring out what they need to continue that growth and identifying how best to uh provide that growth to them. And the next action is that middle school redesign. So as Dr. Kaufman said, a very important aspect of. Our plans over the next three years will be engaging our middle school staff and our broader middle school community in what it will look like. To uh transition between sites with new leadership and also into a new site. And what does that mean about the options that we might have to look at different things, including instructional schedules? But also structures around positive behavioral interventions and support and other things that uh, you know, we, we want to be working with our community, our teaching community. Our student community, our families um to ensure that we're doing that together. The next action is that schools are appropriately staffed and all students receive core or tier one social emotional learning instruction and positive behavioral support. So ensuring that we call out that in social emotional learning is essential for our students, we know that and how are we going to ensure that we're providing that to all students? Next, schools are appropriately staffed to provide students with enhanced core instruction and enrichment while also allowing time for teacher preparation and collaboration. Currently, most of our enhancements are around visual and performing arts. And uh, that also is in line with our um collective bargaining agreement, which states how many minutes. Our elementary and middle school teachers receive of preparation and planning time. And so ensuring that we're able to provide that preparation and planning time for our teachers, but also thinking about. Um, that portrait of a graduate that Dr. Kaufman mentioned, what does that look like as we move forward? And do we need to be thinking about uh programmatic changes or enhancements or differences as we move into the next, you know, however many years? And finally, the last action here is around instructional technology. That it's supported through a district-based team made up of a technology systems manager, three technology support specialists and one instructional technology coach. As well as student devices provided in each K-five classroom at a ratio of one to one. And a student device provided to each six-eight student for school-related use at school and at home. As well as related to instructional technology that our core instructional programs are supported by supplemental instructional programs for differentiation. In tier one and as well as for tier two and tier three support. I'm going to turn it over to Laura for goal two.
And goal two is about closing the opportunity gap and it's gonna sound in many ways similar to goal one. But it's how we take those things and really target them towards our um most vulnerable students. So goal two, action two point one is about how we measure student learning and progress and part of this is identifying. A data and assessment management system and also initiating Technology Tuesdays. Where teachers can drop in for some extra support and analysis, which is exciting. The next action um two point two is um calling out the specific types of assessments. So how do we know that, that our students know? And so it, it talks about screening um. Progress monitoring, summative assessments and just specifically what those um are called or what they might look like. The next action, two point three is ensuring that those that, who need more get more. So those are tier two and tier three. So this would be supplemental in addition to what they get in their regular tier one classrooms. Um, if they need something more either academically or socially emotionally. This is ensuring that we are following the high, most high impact strategies um to support those students. Two point four is the staffing around that to ensure that we have adequate staffing to support our most vulnerable students. So um, for those that do need more, we have TOSSAs, we have TLL, we have um. Things in addition to the tier one um staffing, including counselors and psychologists. Um, and hopefully some positive behavior interventions and supports as well. Two point five is ensuring that we have adequate time to provide all of these amazing resources for our kids. And so it's really about making sure that we have the instructional minutes um to support our students, our most vulnerable students. And um across all three tiers. And then the last um goal, uh, action in this section, action two point six. Is ensuring that our special ed students have the supports and services that are appropriate for their individual needs based on their IAPs. And so that requires a lot of staffing and that staffing is outlined in the section and then also at the very end, that bottom one calls out the software. That um is used to ensure progress in um data tracking strategies. And that concludes goal two.
And I'm up for goal three. So this is a goal that builds um from prior LCAP goals and also from the strategic plan. As well as a district's communication plan uh and it's really to focus on community engagement and communication. So the first goal, three, goal three, action three point one is to look at ways that we can inform. Our community with effective district and school websites, parent and community communication and social media and you'll see. A breakdown of some of the initial steps, some that we already do and some that we're looking to expand like translation for meetings. Next slide. This is another area where we would really like to systematize what we do. We did receive the, the findings of our communications audit. That was uh, we got them last week, I think, and we haven't had time to really engage and look at them, but. Really looking at systematic ways that parents know where to look for information. Um, community members know where to look for information and that we. Know when and how we're doing our internal communication, when and how we're engaging our external community and who we're engaging and then. Specific to our bond, you know, what, what are we gonna do to make sure our community is aware? Of the work that we're doing and has confidence in, in our work and then uh finally just. Making sure that our communication processes and procedures are clear and understandable uh and predictable as well for the members of our community. Uh, specifically, uh, we want to build out uh a work. Uh, format so that when we're sending an alert about student safety or something, that it doesn't look like it's just coming through parent square. But that there's a format that when we're doing crisis communication, which hopefully we don't need to do a whole lot. That we have that and it's visible and, and parents know to pay attention to it in, in the moment. Uh, of course, uh. Three point three. So we, as you heard earlier, we'd like to continue uh looking at developing our portrait of a graduate. And really what is it that we want all students to know and be able to do? Uh, and what type of graduate are we uh producing uh as our students leave our system and enter our next system? We also want to really leverage, we've done a lot of community hot town hall meetings this year, but to. To figure out how to leverage those for single topics and uh, you know, areas where we really need open dialogue. We would like to engage our community, our city, our civic leaders, our county in at least two. Uh, community round tables hosted by the district a year and then also uh. Present state of the district uh luncheon again with uh hopefully, you know, members of our community at large. So that everybody in our community, uh, because our schools really are our community. Uh, we would not have the schools we did if we didn't have the community support that we have and we want everybody to know what our story is and. How they can engage. We'd also like to involve our neighbor, neighbors uh from the Redwood program. Next door to join us um potentially in visiting our campuses, um, looking at maybe some tours, um, bus rides. Uh, bringing people around to just see what we're doing and, and get a chance to see where our um programs, particularly Measure G are, but. So it'd be great to be able to invite people walk, to walk through our classrooms with us as well. And then you'll see here a, a list of standing committees that uh would be. Planned for, some of them exist and um some of them, uh, you'll, you'll see a little bit from Scott Segal again tonight around. Our finances and maybe looking at developing a budget advisory committee. That's a little bit different than what we've had in the past. Last slide, I'm second to last slide. Again, I already addressed the emergency communications, but really making sure that. That we have a clear uh triage response and that we're able to. Make sure that people know when they need to know, what they need to know and also um how to respond in any situation so that we keep our students safe. And we maintain a order and um, you know, the opportunity to respond to any, any needs we need to. And then finally, uh, this is an area that's been, you know, a, a focus for the board and board guidance was provided here in terms of really. You know, building out our comms and not just our crisis communications, but you know, making effective and meaningful communication. Uh, and management of our social media, branding, our, our website, all of those pieces. So this is a, an area of. Uh, potential uh focus uh for us moving forward in the twenty-four, twenty-five and beyond uh school years. So now I'll hand it over to Mr. Reel.
Thank you. Um, I just first want to thank everybody for being so welcoming. I know most of the people in the room right now, but I don't know everybody and. Um, Mill Valley is truly a special place. I, and I'm not just saying that to, you know, be all rosy and whatever, but it really is. It's a special place and, and with a lot of special staff too. And unfortunately, not being here full-time, I haven't gotten a chance to meet very many. Uh, as many people as I would like to have, but um, I told my wife, I said, if I would, I have two very angry daughters, but um. It would, it would be nice to move out this way, but anyhow, um, thank you guys. Thank everybody for, for having me and um. Since this is my debut, I told Dr. Kaufman I'm gonna keep it to forty minutes for my goal. But um, no, it'll be, it'll be pretty short and sweet. Uh, Mr. Segal is gonna be touching on a lot of what the, this goal touches on, so. Um, I don't want to get too into it, but anyhow, uh, the first for goal four, excuse me, um, it's ensure transparency and budget development and facilities planning. Uh, while maintaining sound financed infrastructure and really budget and, and the facilities go hand in hand. If you think about their facilities. It's especially looking at what we have in here in Mill Valley ahead of us. Outside of personnel costs and staffing costs, our facilities are a, a huge expense, so. Um, we'll touch on a few actions here. The first action is to attract and retain uh highly qualified and appropriately. Appropriately credentialed and trained staff. Uh, with our budget being typically in the mid eighties, at, at the beginning of this year, the budget was eighty-four percent personnel cost, so. And that's pretty typical, you're gonna be in the mid to high eighties uh percentage-wise of your, your budget is all personnel cost, so. It with this, it touches on staffing ratios and, and just making sure that there's a plan for making sure that we have, you know, cr. Highly qualified instructors in the classroom, instructional aides and, and everybody at all levels. Uh, the second action is maintaining prudent financial reserves for long-term financial solvency and developing a plan to maximize. The chance of extending the parcel tax. So uh, this is huge and it's something that Mr. Scott Segal is gonna touch on quite a bit in his presentation. Um, so I will let him touch on that later on. Um, but it is important, especially with the, the parcel tax expiring in. What, five years here, so. Action three. Is ensuring community confidence through transparent, user-friendly budget and ongoing report, reporting of income expenditures. First, one of the steps in that is the hiring of Mr. Scott Segal in Leaders Forward. Um, and also I hope that even though my presence here is only in the interim, I hope to shed some light on some things and, and. Help to make things more transparent and, and communicate things, maybe, and I'm not trying to say anything negative about prior people or anything like that, but just to. Make sure that I'm a pretty open book, the numbers are the numbers, it's all public information, so um, the more that we can. Educate, not just, not just community, but staff too, to be able to understand the budget and be involved in the budget, the, the better. the, the better it is for everybody. So that is a large part of what this action is trying to address. Then action four is the maintaining, maintain safe and modernized facilities. Again, this is maintenance and operations and everything with Measure G. It's going to be, play a major part in our facilities moving forward and making sure, as always, Julio in, in maintenance, making sure, working with Keenan to make sure that our facilities are safe and up to code for our students and staff.
Okay. So the last slide now talks about some of those increased and improved services that we are looking forward to, including over the next three years of the LCAP plan. So the first speaks to the English language development instruction that students receive and captures some of the things that have been ongoing. And so looking at how we are ensuring that we're continuing that, providing support to our teachers. We did increase our English language teacher pool last year by one additional FTE, which was great. And excited to continue looking at how those teach, how we can support those teachers and best supporting our English learners throughout the district. We also plan to continue making translation services available, not only at larger events, but also at things like parent teacher conferences or IEP meetings, SST meetings, back to school night, and ensuring that people know how to access those services. So not only that we have them available, but they're easily accessible by our staff members who run many of those meetings, but also for our parents to know that they can ask for it or how to access it, you know, in an easy way. Again, around our English learner staff receiving training specific to supporting the needs. We have a great staff that's working super hard and has lots of expertise in this area. But of course, we want to ensure that we are continuing to offer them opportunities to learn more and figure out how best to serve our, our English learners. Ensuring that our English learners are receiving targeted instruction in the general education classroom in addition to the pullout designated instruction that they receive. Designating supplemental counseling support learners for English, sorry, counseling support opportunities for our English learners and socioeconomically disadvantaged students or any other unduplicated students that we have in the district. Holding empathy interviews with our district English learner advisory committee or DLAC committee members, including both district and school staff to figure out how our systems can ensure that we're serving those families as best as possible. Identifying and providing additional designated support for middle school English learners and how we could best do that. And then providing extra learning opportunities and transportation coordination if needed to our English learners over the summer and during the school year and to other unduplicated students as well, as well as much as possible. And finally, providing additional designated support for our reclassified English learners. So those are English learners who are no longer English learners, well, are still continuing to learn English, but have met the state requirements to be reclassified as reclassified fluent English proficient learners. Lots of acronyms tonight, over multiple years, and then ensuring that we're tracking their progress so that they, we make sure that they stay successful throughout their time here in the Mill Valley School District.
I'll jump in quickly on the appendix next. Just, I'm not going to go through it slide by slide, but we wanted to try to capture as part of the LCAP, you know, any of the sort of contracts or external contracts that we're using or anticipating for next year. This is, this appendix is just a, an initial start. We do anticipate bringing in the board to the best of our knowledge, all of our contracts for twenty-four, twenty-five in a single item at the hopefully June sixth meeting so that the board knows and can see what the, you know, total outflow of consulting contracts are. And then on a monthly basis, we will update in some manner that Scott and Corey will divine for us so that we are maintaining transparency. I think in most cases, ongoing, you'll see legal costs and special education fees potentially, you know, beyond whatever it is we bring at the beginning of the year because those are more fluctuate, they fluctuate more, those costs. So anyway, that is the end of our LCAP presentation.
Questions? I'll start with trustee Abdoli.
Item one, action item one point three. Not to be too dramatic, I'm a little appalled that science and social studies twice a week and one time being a garden instructor is somehow acceptable. I'm not even aware that our garden instructors are certified teachers. So we're saying that so we're saying that science in this district and social studies in this district are twice a week and maybe not even with a credential teacher. Is that how I'm reading that? Am I misinterpreting it?
Say that that's a minimum expectation.
Isn't this whole thing supposed to be like our objective? So we're putting our minimum standard in here?
I think in this case, we haven't had instructional schedules or expectations in the past. So we are working on making sure that, absolutely that the language arts and mathematics core are covered every day. And that when we look at the remaining time available, we are covering science and social studies in that allotment as well. And I don't, you know, this is, I've spoken about schedules throughout the year. We definitely have competing demands on our schedules and I think that's something for us to consider. And that's partly why it's presented in this way where we're looking at, at the very minimum a science schedule that occurs twice weekly.
I mean, I, I object to that, that that's unacceptable to me that it would be, I mean, you're really actually saying once a week because if a garden instructor is also considered, you know, I, I assume our teachers are getting credentialed for a reason and they have experience in teaching certain subjects. And so it worries me that we're having such an infrequent expectation and, and also like outsourcing it to what I don't believe are credential teachers. So that, that worries me.
I, I just, one thing to put out there, I think garden happens maybe once a month, maybe twice a month for like the little kids. So I don't know how much garden is taking place of the teachers in the classroom.
Okay.
I think it's also aligned with the science curriculum in partnership with the teachers. So.
And the teachers are at the garden instruction.
I still stand by twice a week. I, I am surprised by that and I don't think that's sufficient for science and social studies.
Just can I ask just a related question? Because CKL Amplify is going to tie in science and social studies as part of that curriculum. Is this going to be, like when we're looking at counting science and social studies, is that going to be together with the, like the ALA time count towards that or that's separate? And this would be in addition to whatever they get through CKL Amplify?
So the, the goal of a knowledge-based curriculum is not to supplant specific instruction, science, social studies. And so it would be that while kids will be introduced to different knowledge strands, it's not going to be the replacement of their science or social studies instruction.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So.
Go ahead.
Oh, so I'm wondering if this is elementary school, okay, that what is happening currently in the classroom? Because, you know.
Can you go back that slide? Sorry.
There it is. Two times a week. Can include garden. Okay, so I just, you know, I know we've had a history of teachers bringing their, their great gifts to the, to, to the table. And, you know, some people were science majors and I remember my daughter got a lot of science. And I was not a great science teacher. I am a, I have a master's in reading. So, you know, I, I know what morphology means and I, you know, I taught four spelling groups in my classroom and everybody wanted the words their way in fifth grade because nobody else did it. So I guess my question is, can you speak a little bit to how this might actually enhance the science program or does it really not? You know, what's the reality to try and understand trustee Abdoli's concern and, and grounded in what you know?
So is the question, how to see, how will, how will the ELA curriculum enhance science? Is that the question?
No, more than just like, you know, we're saying we want to see science two times a week in the classroom. And I think, you know, that's good because some people who don't, you know, elementary school are teaching six different curriculums. And, you know, some school districts just hire science teachers, you know, and, you know, depending on their priorities, they hire people that come in and provide science. Everything costs money. So I guess what, what lives now in the classroom that you've noticed?
So we've done, the last couple of years, we've done some different opportunities at staff meetings where we've had teachers kind of populate what they're doing daily to see, are there enough instructional minutes? You might recall the length of day conversation of a couple of years ago. And part of the preparation for those conversations was to say, do you, do we have enough time in our current schedule? And, and anecdotally, and I don't have a spreadsheet to show this, but at that time, teachers were able to place all of the subject matters within the day. It's just not an extensive amount of time. So like ELA might have been sixty minutes and with this curriculum, we might need ninety to a hundred and twenty minutes. So that's where the, that's going to be part of the growing of this next year of to see how to make it all work. But anecdotally from with a little bit more than anecdotally, what I saw during those conversations is that teachers were able to teach science and social studies close to daily. Social studies sometimes overlaps with library because our librarians are so gifted and intentional in the way that they teach. So like they will, they're not just reading books, they're doing things on voting and democracy. So, so that would be one kind of supplant. But other than that, teachers are, were reporting that they were teaching all of the core content areas.
Right. Also what I noticed, we don't have, you know, minutes, what the required minutes are, but we all know that to teach science properly, you know, an hour's not going to cut it, you know, so to actually teach science, it might be two days a week, but you're going to be teaching. You know, I mean, I guess that would be an interesting addition to the, to the chart is, is.
That would be very helpful.
Right. Because it's not just like, oh my God, they're teaching it two times for like, you know, what, half hour? Like what, what's, you know? So I would agree with you, just the, this, this offers more questions. But maybe between now and that, you know, we can get some, some more detail on that before Jim.
And, oh, sorry. If memory serves for my children now, things may have changed. It's been now about six years or, I don't know, something like that. But I remember in fifth grade, we were rotating classrooms. They had, for something like science and social studies, they had in a way intensives that lasted five or six weeks at a time. I don't know if we still do that. Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think it's at the younger.
Does that mean that that averages out to two times a week through the year? Is that what we're saying in time wise? Because I, I realize that what Dr. Kaufman is saying is there's only so many minutes right now. And so we're competing for time all the time and we've got enrichment on top of this. That's not even part of it.
So I think, I mean, just a quick, quick aside and I, we can add the minutes because we started with the minutes, but then like we, we've been going over schedules all year. So I was, when we did this, we're like, well, we have, we know what we need to do for sure for language arts. We want to put that in and we know what we need to do for sure for math because those are two curriculum programs that we've adopted. Generally, I mean, we calculated based on the bridges minutes for the basic minimums. Because again, we're trying to build a consistent district-wide tier one. So these elements on the right-hand side are examples of where we're wanting to head. I would say science and social studies generally are forty-five minutes because you do want to do an intensive. You don't want to do here, let's pull out our scholastic news on Weekly Reader and call it social studies, which is what some of us may have done in the past when we were teaching. Because I might have loved teaching science a lot more than I love teaching social studies. So we're trying to create a consistency and coherence so that again, we can build in those programmatic expectations. Right now, we don't have consistent practice, classroom to classroom, site to site. So we're trying to say generally so that we can build our planning time. Hey, when are we going to talk about science in this district? You know, when are we going to talk about language arts? But we can certainly clarify the minutes and, you know, I, I will say we spend, you know, a fair amount of time. We have two hundred minutes of prep for teachers weekly. We embedded in that is physical education, which is a state requirement. So that's listed here. What you don't see is the visual and performing arts time that's spent based on community priorities that have existed and been extant in the past and resulted in the selection and, and development of visual and performing arts programs, which is partly why we're engaging in some of those conversations about Portrait of a Graduate. Because timing is limited and there is an amount of instructional time that is going into what we call co-curricular classes that are provided by specialist teachers who, you know, could as easily be a science teacher as they could be, you know, or a language teacher as they could be a visual and performing arts teacher. We aren't at that place right now as a system where we know what that is. But that is definitely what we're trying to build into that Portrait of a Graduate is, you know, and, and of course, everybody's going to want everything, right? We, you know, so it's going to be a matter of what do we do and what do we not do or for how much? And so I think that's initial conversations and an effort to standardize. This is an, an uncharacteristic approach, I believe, in Mill Valley in terms of even asking these questions around how are we standardizing instructional practice in, in terms of time? And we want to do that in a way that's respectful of, of past practice and history and, and instructional decision-making. And we also want to make sure that we know as a system, you know, if we have a language arts program, that it's evidence-based and needs to be taught daily, that that is done daily, you know, that mathematics is done daily because those are the real true building blocks of how our children move from one, one grade level to the next. Some of the other pieces are really instructional priorities or district priorities driven. And right now, again, the priorities for co-curricular historically have been the visual and performing arts.
I would just add also that science and social studies, in my experience in our classrooms here, have tended to be some of the project-based learning areas as well. So that might be divided differently or allocated differently and, and how, and again, based on information gathering in the library or something, you know, related to the garden and, and working on gathering that as well. So, you know, speaking to two times a week for a directed lesson or something like that, but perhaps doesn't capture all the work time around that topic or the other things that students might be doing related to science and social studies. And, and the other thing, Dr. Kaufman touched on it, but the state is vague in offering any instructional minute requirements for anything other than PE, interestingly. So.
Arnold Schwarzenegger. So he's the one.
That's helpful. And maybe that's where I'm turned off by twice weekly because that really sounds like a floor rather than a seal, you know, where we're going for. And I also, I don't think it's reflective of what, I mean, we have California reports. I mean, I think round number four, I've seen maps of geography. Thank you. Topography and like we've done trouts, we've done, so there's a lot that's going on. And I would hate for, like, honestly, if I were a parent looking at this district saying, oh, they think science is a twice a week thing, that would be a turnoff for me. And I appreciate what you're saying about different priorities, but like, science to me is a fundamental. It's not an optional extra. So I, maybe it's the verbiage or how we're doing this, but, but I guess my takeaway is I, I think that is both a disservice to what our teachers are actually providing and does not reflect at least the values that I have for this district.
I, I think the only other thing that I would add is that, you know, we, we do know that we're adopting hopefully an ELA curriculum for next year. And we know that that will take intense work from our teachers to implement that and determine what that means related to instructional minutes and things like that. We also know that the math frameworks will lead us to adopting likely a new math curriculum right after we adopt the ELA, not like the next year. Don't worry, teachers. But, you know, we know that that's coming as well. And then we also know that we need to turn to social studies and science because we have not had those curricular adoptions in a while in this district. And so, but we can only do so much too. So you're right, we, we, we want to be sure we acknowledge what is going on in our classrooms and also capture that we do have potentially long-term growth in this area as well.
Trustee, yes. Okay. And I, I think this feedback also is helpful for us in rewriting it so that it, I agree that, that through that lens, it doesn't look super enticing.
What's called a draft.
We have lots. I mean, I can tell you all about trouts.
This is basically like an intensive first read in a way.
Well, I think is, things are still the same as what you, what you articulated. And my daughter in third grade had a teacher who is so passionate about science and learned. And my daughter in third grade had a teacher who is so passionate about science and learned all about clouds. And I don't, I don't even know, but the, the things that it sparked in her are amazing. And so I do think that when it comes to fifth grade, there is very substantial uh, curriculum around that rotates with the classrooms around what they're, what they're getting. I see with the ELA, the first through third, that it's a hundred and twenty minutes. And obviously, it's a lot more intense at that level, so it's gonna be harder because those grade levels are going to require more time for ELA. But it would also be really amazing at that young age to spark that joy and excitement and curiosity in these budding scientists or whatever they choose to do. Um, in the same way that we want to create that, you know, joy and love of reading. So um, I'm with you. I look forward to seeing what we do with that.
Yeah, and I do think what it is, is just that this chart doesn't fully, I think, actually reflect what's really happening, because we know good teaching is about project-based learning. We know, you know, it's about embedding English, Language Arts, Science and Social Studies into interesting, you know, guiding questions. And that, that this lives in teaching here in Mill Valley. But I do want to share that this is very LCAP-y, you know, in other words, it's LCAP lingo. And, you know, I hate to say it, but it goes to the county. And so it's almost like, who's your audience? This tends to be an audience of people that are looking like, okay, they know the minutes, they're gonna adhere to it and so on. So, you know, I just want to leave you with that little bit of, I think this has sparked really good conversation. And I think part of it is how do we get, how do we make this more user-friendly is maybe a, a, a thing that we have to continue to let the state know. Um, because this really should be a guiding document and you shouldn't have to create one for them and one for someone else. And I read, I did this um, as a principal in a, in a um, dependent charter district. I had to create the LCAP for my school. And the one thing that was interesting as I'm seeing this format is getting away from its, the original was a little more organic. And it actually, I could be, you know, I could give detail and I could show a story about how we weave things together. So I'm kind of disappointed that they're going in a more structured way. And the only other thing I wanted to ask, are they asking anymore about, give us your data that shows you major metrics and that kind of stuff? Is that happening still?
Yes, that will be, that will be coming in the June sixth presentation.
Oh, okay, so there are metrics that you have to bring forth and 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 uh, and and goals and and it, and you can meet them mid-year and reallocate. Okay, thank you.
And with the next and latest iteration of the LCAP, we're back to baseline again, right? Every three years, you get back to baseline. So um, we're starting over again.
I think one good thing, though, is that this conversation sparked a really great conversation that now like you're able to say to the public what your priorities are. And as a former science teacher, I'm very happy to hear the rich discussion around science. So I think as, as painful as the LCAP process can be, it did spark a good conversation about what our priorities are.
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that it, it's the verbiage. Like, I do love that the garden is there and I do think that's a valuable, like, that's not something every district has. That's a very cool way to teach science and should absolutely stay there. I appreciate that maybe we just make it for the, for the non-educator community too.
Sorry. Oh, yeah, it's shocking to, when you analyze it like that, it's shocking. Um, any other questions about this particular slide or anything? Cause I have a question about one point six, which is the redesign of um, or re, middle school redesign. So I, I mean, I, I love this, but I don't know what it means. Um, because I, I get that the Portrait of a Graduate is something and developing and maybe taking a look at our middle school as a culture, as a curriculum, everything, that can happen in any building, that doesn't matter. But this seems to be kind of be tied into it. So I don't quite understand, and it's got some money set aside. Uh, the biggest time for the influence of anything that's gonna go on in the redesign is right now. So twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven are not, there's not any opportunity anymore. If all of a sudden we discover, you know what, our seventh graders really work well this way, wouldn't it be great if we had that space? Oh, well, it's already framed and constructed or whatever. So I, I'm just, my question about that.
This would be program redesign, like curriculum program and, you know, like for example, one of the things that this district could do very well and build on, uh, which requires time, focus and money, um, is building on the project-based learning. And and so should this middle school say, okay, one of the things we really think to leverage on where our students are coming from a general ed ele- elementary program where things really are integrated in a robust way and then they're coming to a departmentalized middle school? Um, you know, do we want to do a project-based learning approach? If we do, we're gonna need to train staff, we're gonna need to provide time for that curriculum. So, or, you know, one of the things we know that evidence says is great about um, universal design for learning is that it creates inclusion and access for all learners. That would, if I were wishing a wish for all of our classrooms, it would be UDL. Um, so again, that, that could be another option. So what we're trying to do here in the vacuum that we have at the moment is say, look, we don't want to leave the middle school out. We've been focusing on so much and we've been asking individual departments what their three-year plan is. But we really haven't captured the identity of what our middle school is and what are, what it, what it creates and and can be, you know, as it has a long-term leadership. I believe it's had six principals in the last maybe five years, I'm not sure. Um, and so we need to create a place that has a heart and soul and identity for staff and students that exists beyond an individual leader or an individual setting and um, or an individual, individual department. And so our children need to come through with some habits of mind or skills cultivated that reflect within and across departments and curriculum and grade level. So this is really placeholder in the sense that we want to allocate resources. It could be PBIS, it could be UDL, it could be project-based learning. It's something we want them to identify and commit to as part of their identity to school. We also don't want to prescribe it at the moment because they're in transition in so many ways right now.
Okay, that, that, that's kind of what I thought when I saw this before the presentation, but then you spoke about like moving schools and then the physical structures, and I was a little confused. So, thank you. All good.
I have a quick one on one nine. I am, I, I have heard right now that we have some programs that go K-five in terms of our, like what apps we use and then totally different ones when they go to junior high and there is no continuity. Is there, since these are goals, is there like a goal that like, you know, i- if we have a K-five that's emphasizing certain programs that there is continuity throughout, or maybe they at least try to use some of the ones in the middle school. It just feels very disjointed for being one district. I'd love to get your feedback if I'm totally off on that, but.
Well, I think that one of the, you know, the middle school curriculum at the middle school is aligned right now in using the CPM curriculum. And the elementary curriculum, you know, is standards-based, but they're using different curriculums. And so there are different supplemental programs to that throughout the grades. We also have had iReady for the last few years that has some practice platform things and is used differently. And then iXL is another popular one that um, has been used. And so we are looking at where we, one of the things, the great things that's come out of some of the alignment meetings, the articulation meetings that we've had at the professional development days and allocating time for that, is giving the chance for fifth and sixth grade teams to talk and, and see what those alignment things can be. Um, you know, there is not a lot of continuity in terms of digital curriculum, but there is digital curriculum that's used, like the CPM textbook is online. And the uh, TCI history, I think TCI History Alive, is that what it's called, or just TCI? TCI, that's the uh, curriculum, again, all the acronyms.
Just like that level, but this is helpful.
We certainly, we, you know, COVID, having remote learning gave lots of technology companies the opportunity to say, use our, use our product. And so we have worked and whittled down over the last few years to a few different programs. And it is also important that we evaluate what the purpose of a program is. How is the iReady instruction different than the iXL skill practice? Uh, are there things that iXL can do that would replace iReady and what will that look like? And so part of adopting the new English Language Arts curriculum is also what will be part of that, that then we, you know, may be redundant in some other system that we're using, so.
On a, on a related note, would all students have access to, to these? Because I, I know I've heard the middle school uses, you know, and feels really strongly about iXL. They have a fourth grader, I was like, oh, can you use that? And she's looked into, you know, with an interest in doing more with that, has looked into that and that is not there. Obviously, iReady is there and she has strong feelings about that. Um, and so uh, I'm assuming there's a cost that goes along with the more access we provide to the greater number of student, the greater number of students, we are paying more for that.
And the purpose of the different systems. They are different systems and they offer different, you know, iReady has instruction embedded in the practice skills. And iXL is a, is a skill practice platform that does have the option to engage with instructional videos, but it's not part of the platform. So they really are, like, it is, it's part of iXL, but it's not part of what a student is required to do as part of practicing a skill. And so again, it's engaging with the teachers and there has been a, a request for fourth and fifth grade to have iXL next year. It's something that we're looking at for next year to offer some of that continuity. But also looking at what the purpose of these things are as we move forward and what we're going to measure, what we're trying to measure, what we're looking to offer in our classrooms.
And so that would be across whichever one it is that you're looking at across the grade level and not just based on individual teachers and what their preferences are.
Across the grade level, but again, until we have adopted curriculum in, across that, it is, there's still choice available to teachers in terms of what they're using. Thank you.
I don't know if this fits in here, and this might be me dating myself, but like Google Classroom is so cool how they use it. I mean, those are really, like, that's a very cool way that kids are just also learning to read slide decks and submit and just.
We don't have Google Classroom listed here because we use the free version of the Google Suite. It is still used. It's, it's the primary learning management system for our elementary and middle school classrooms. Um, but it's, it's not listed here because we wouldn't consider it really a supplemental instructional program.
Totally. It's just, it's, but it's a very cool way that they are learning. I mean, literally what I sit and do all day and they're, you know, figuring out the keyboards and formatting. I mean, it's, it's very impressive. I'm sure it's been around for like twenty years and it's just new to me. It's very cool.
Trusty cats? Um, just broader ten-thousand-foot view question. Once we, once we approve the LCAP, is there going to be like a one-pager, easy-to-digest? Something that will be created to?
So there are some things that the state requires as part of the release of the LCAP, but act, as Dr. Sernicich Hodge mentioned, it is, it is a state practice procedure document that has a lot of different boxes that they require us to check. So absolutely part of our job is to ensure that it is accessible and readable and revisited throughout the year. Uh, so that, you know, our, it is framing our priorities and our goals and our actions.
We will very likely have a glossy four-page mailer that comes out at some point. It's the question of sequencing when. We will very likely have a glossy four-page ma- mailer coming out about Measure G as well. So it's really kind of a state-of-the-district thing and probably as a back-to-school thing with um, MVST together and our community partners. It'll be super cute.
Well, we are running late. Um, do we have any other LCAP comments, questions?
Oh, sorry.
Any more for LCAP?
I was just gonna say three point five, which is just the um, what you're alluding to right now, I think is really critical. I appreciate your inclusion of this.
Ah, yeah. Okay, well, then I don't think, but there's no action on this. This is very, very informative and I'm glad we're doing, you know, we, we got a lot, I think.
We won't do it again next week, so enjoy it while you have it, because we're gonna make the next one. Or not next week, the week after. Our June sixth meeting will be much simpler than this.
So, this is now the time. So uh, thank you. We are going to uh, move on to items under J, personnel.
These items are all three consider approval and action items. So Cory will present them, but they are action items.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay, that's fine. We don't, do we still need, we don't need to roll call that then? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kaufman.
Very quickly, you ready for?
Yes.
Okay, um, declaration of need for uh, educators, fully qualified educators. We do this annually. Uh, you've seen it before. It's just an ability for us to be able to uh, let the state and county know that uh, we are continuing to search for highly qualified educators with appropriate credentials. And in the current staff shortage nationally, we may also need to uh, engage uh, individuals with uh, either uh, limited assignment permits or uh, you know, some sort of interim credential. So that's uh, that's it. And um, at the moment, we just need an action to approve.
Okay, get a motion to approve?
I so moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, uh, now Cory, we have the AB twelve hundred.
Okay, this item is one that you probably saw, I don't know when, but not too long ago, uh, related to MVTA. This is the public disclosure related to the tentative agreement uh, reached between CSEA and the district. And what this is, is it's a requirement um, to disclose all of the uh, financial impact of the uh, agreement and it's also called the AB twelve hundred. You might hear it as AB twelve hundred at times. Um, and it just outlines that we are able to afford the financial impact of the agreement and the superintendent and CBO sign off uh, certifying that that is the case. So uh, we would just respectfully ask for uh, approval.
Uh, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, motion carries. And the last one is um, following up to the AB twelve hundred, I guess, right?
Absolutely. This is the tentative agreement that's associated with the AB twelve hundred that you just approved. And it outlines the actual agreement with CSEA. Uh, the financial impact was the four percent increase uh, to salaries and then for um, positions that require a self-own, it's uh, forty dollars a month for those reimbursement for those uh, staff members.
And also MVTA? Mill Valley School, uh, the Mill Valley Teacher Association as well is attached to this? No?
No, this, this is uh,
Oh, just CSEA?
Just yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, motion to approve, number item G.
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Um, thank you. We will go now to Scott Siegel. Welcome.
And I'll just set a little bit of context on this as uh, as you know, we are working on uh, creating transparent, open communication around our budget. And uh, one of the, the things that we want to make sure is that we are capturing ongoing how our budget trends. Um, so that our community knows uh, what data and information and with what risk we make decisions uh, uh, economically, uh, financially and um, for um, the benefit of our students. So I'll hand it to Scott.
Thank you. Before I start, I'd give you just a little bit of introduction of, about me, because you're hearing some budget information and I'd like you to know the context. Uh, I was a, I was actually a math and science teacher when I started my career. I was a high school principal. I worked for about eight years as the CBO, Assistant Super Business Services for my district. And I was a superintendent for eleven before retiring three years ago. I um, that was a district, series unified school district, which is in the Central Valley, uh, just south of Podesta, was actually attached to South Nesto. Uh, was a student, district of about fourteen thousand when I left. And uh, it was not the same as Mill Valley. Uh, in fact, I can't imagine that in some ways, it's like as far away as it can be. Um, we had an eighty, eighty-five to eight to ninety percent unduplicated count. Um, and it just, I think that tells you everything you need to know. We were not a basic A district. And there are no basic A districts in the county uh, uh, that school district is located in. So there's a list of topics on the next page. I'm gonna go fairly quickly here for parts of it. I, I don't know if you, it looks to me like you have a board, a board norm of holding questions to the end. Okay, then I, I won't.
Unless there are specific times where it's, it makes sense for you to.
So if it makes sense, like you're not understanding something or there's something you need clarification on, please, please, please stop. Um, so that, that, I, I don't want to move through without understanding here. So the going, just pick, go to the next slide, please, and skip that and go straight to purpose. So there's three things that, that we want to attempt to do. Um, we want to increase understanding of the budget by people in your community. As part of uh, increasing the transparencies, people can't understand the budget, don't understand a budget, you're not gonna be transparent. We also want to increase transparency and we want to increase engagement. And budget's one of those things, I bet when you get the reports on budget, um, and the attachments and they're usually about a hundred pages long, that it's kind of a glossy. That it's kind of a glossy moment where you glaze, exactly, glaze over and it's a lot of information. So maybe trying to go towards understanding what the key pieces of that are would be better than just, here's the document and approve it. Uh, we also, there's an eye on this about establishing a budget committee. Um, Dr. Kaufman called the Budget Advisor Committee, I think you can name it whatever you want. Um, you want to really carefully define when you do a budget committee, exactly what their role is, you don't want them, if their job is not to replace you. Then you don't want them thinking that their job is to make decisions about the budget. It's a place for people to get information and disperse information to the community, um, and people who really need to know. So if we look at reserves, the one thing that tells, if I want to look at districts' financial health more than anything else. The reserve levels and how they're changing. It's no different than a person's personal finances. If I want to know, understand someone's personal finances. If I know what their balance and their bank account is right before they get paid each month or every two weeks or whatever the time period is, then. How and how that number is changing from month to month, I'm going to have a pretty good sense of how they're doing financially. I don't need to know the breakdown of exactly how they're spending their money. I need to know how that reserve, that balance that they have is is and how it's changing. So you have a fairly good sized reserve and I'm actually going to recommend that you revisit at some point in the next year or so. Your reserve policy, it's a board policy thirty-one hundred. And it, in that, I think you need to establish what the reserve levels you want to have are, really define it. If you want to have a thirty percent reserve, you can justify that and state it. Um, that that's what our goal is, or we want to have a between a twenty-five and thirty-five percent reserve or whatever that number is. That there's plenty of reasons for a community funded school district that has a partial tax, very large partial tax, to have a healthy reserve. One of them is cash flow, you get paid basically, most of your money comes in twice a year. You'll get paid each month regularly, like my old district got paid pretty regularly, you get paid. After the December tax collections and after the April tax collections, so you have cash flow low points in November, December. And another one ahead of the, uh, like in April, right before they, in May, the county treasury gives you your money. Um, and you need to be able to survive those without going to people begging for my cash. So just basic aid districts or community funded school districts have a need for cash and that means reserves. You also need to be able to adjust to unforeseen circumstances. You need to have program continuity. If something happens. There's a reassessment of all the, and and property values drop and assessed values drop and people start paying fewer property taxes, that affects your revenue, for example. You need time to react to that. If you have very low reserves, you have to make cuts right away to react, to adjust. And it can be very devastating to student educational programs, where if you have good sized reserves, you can do it slower and more thoughtfully. And then finally, you have a budget that is very dependent on a twelve million dollar a year parcel tax. And this is about one fifth of your budget. Imagine if that goes away. That's a twenty percent hit right away. Reserves buy you a little bit of time, maybe a year in that case, to to react and adjust before. Having to take very, very serious corrective action. So we're going to look at that again later, but that is, that's all I'm going to say about reserves. I also want to apologize if this is something you already know about, or this is repeated information, I want to talk about the budget cycle a little bit. So. Your budget's constantly changing. Every day, your budget changes. Somebody writes a purchase order out, somebody exhausts their sick leave. Something leaves and you have an open position, all those things affect your budget, constantly changing. Districts attempt to do five snapshots during the year. Where are they like, okay, at this date, this is all the information we know, and even that's not on a date, so it's it's wrong. Other than the last one, but at least you're getting an idea of what you have. And the first one, those the adopted budget, which you have to do by June thirty, if you'll be doing shortly, it sounds like uh, June twelfth or something like that. That's, that's the most inaccurate of your budgets. It's the furthest away from the end, from when everything's expended. Then at first interim, which you approve as a board by December fifteenth, so every December you should be, be seeing that. It looks to me like, having looked at your, at your board, um, agenda items and pulling those reports off, you've done that. It reflects everything through October thirty-first, it's like another chance to reset and recalculate res- reserves. Recalculate all your spending, all your income and the reserves fall out. Second interim is by March fifteenth. Then in April-ish, some districts do a little earlier, some districts do a little bit later, but April into May. Um, you do estimated actuals, you try to figure out what is, what, what are we really going to end the year with? Because you need to know that to build your budget, because this year's ending balance becomes next year's beginning balance. That's uh, doesn't have a date on there because it comes in when you adopt the budget. And then finally, when you close the books, and it takes a long time to close the books, by September fifteenth, every year you approve the unaudited actuals. And that has a number in it too, and that's the final answer unless your auditor tells you it's not. Usually your auditor doesn't tell you that, so it's okay. And an important thing here is each of those, at each of those points in time, the ending balance is reprojected and and it changes from what it was the previous one. And how that adjusts through the year is going to be important, because there's times where districts play a game of, we don't have enough money to give a raise or we, we're running out of money. Cause as it, and it ends up not being true. And you want to know kind of how your budget changes through the year, it's okay for your budget to change through the year, everyone's budget changes through the year. What's not okay is to not acknowledge that it changes. You want to acknowledge that, yes, we expect to pick up a million dollars through the year, by the time we close the books, we'll be a million dollars better off than we are now. And we could even spend that much. Understanding that if we don't, the million dollars, dollars doesn't appear, that we may need to take some corrective action the following year. So let's go ahead and switch. So I'm going to show you a really, really complicated looking spreadsheet, just because I want you to see, you see some numbers, but then we're going to boil it down to some graphs, okay? And we're going to focus on three columns and probably get up to that there and and go, go look at this. Focus on. The bolded columns, one, two, three, focusing that though, you have a series of years. In each year, there are five budget ones. Adopted, first interim, second interim, estimated actuals, and beyond. Then we have what the revenues are, this is only general fund, these are restricted and unrestricted revenues. Total expenditure, restricted and unrestricted. The three percent required reserve, and I'm going to say about some about three percent required reserve. District set run, if it stays minimum required reserves, usually end up having trustee appointment. Don't go there, nobody very near that. Um, I don't know why the state allows that, it should be more like ten percent of the reserve. Yeah, unrestricted reserves, how many amount of money do you actually have at the end of the year in the bank, it's unrestricted. Now, some of that's designated for certain things, I don't, I ignore that, if it's, if it's there, it's unrestricted, it's available. So you actually spend it, budget it, you spend, it's available reserve. What the percentage is? Restricted reserves. The unrestricted reserves is my big thing, that's, that's how much money you have in the bank. You're facing here, and then what's happened, Jay's year of your house changed, so for example, in sixteen seventeen. Your reserves went up by one point three six million dollars. See that thirteen, almost thirteen, right here, previous year, they were a lot of point. You also see that during the year, you actually showed your deficit point, but you didn't, there's that surplus of a billion dollars. It was year after year after year of this, just kind of getting a sense of what's happened, what's the history of Mill Valley's budget? And then, not to keep you in suspense any longer, go ahead, go to the very last one. Or next one, there we go. Okay, so this is how we boil it down. These are the ending balances in dollars at the end of each of those years and you can kind of see how your budget's trending over a period of time. Um, the last one is a different shading than the others because that last one's not the unadded actuals, it's just in progress. And so it's a lighter shade because it's not real, it's going to change, you know, likelihood it's going to go up. Go ahead and go to the next one. I prefer actually the percentage because you're, as dollars, you're going to build up dollars over time because of inflation. Twenty million dollars today is different than twenty million dollars was five years ago. And so, but if we look at a percentage, it tells you the portion of your budget that you have in reserve. And that's also gone up, but it's been pretty stable for the last four years and that looks like right now it's going to go down. Now I can tell you that you generally pick up, I'm sure if that's the next. Well, we'll get to that in a minute, but you generally pick up money as you close the books and you're going to see that in just a minute, so we'll go to the next slide. Questions, are there patterns in how your budget develops that your, that your labor partners should know about? That your um, foundation partners, your parent partners should all know about, like. Yes, our budget's in deficit right now, but it's probably going to go, go get, come into balance, or maybe it's not going to come into balance. But we should know what those trends look like so we can tell people a more, more transparent story about what's happening. So let's look at, like, the more complicated chart, this one's going to be a little bit, okay, so this has each year with five bars. And those five bars represent in each of the five points, how much of reserve you thought you were going to have. This one should, has a really interesting. You look at very last bar, which is just the closing of the books. Little smaller top, it still goes up. It's likely you're going to pick up some money as opposed to those. Now, there's some things working against that, we'll talk about in a minute, but. Right now, you have, I think it's a one point six million dollar deficit at the second interim. That has a fifty fifty shot. That is, not only anything else, just knowing the past history of corrected. Half the time, the last seven years or so, it's corrected, that level of funding has disappeared, or that funding has disappeared. About half the time it has. The average, I think it's about one point four million over the time period. In- involved, if you look at the change between the second interim and unadded actuals. There's a couple other things going on, so we've got the takeaways here. So one point six million dollar deficit. You want to know kind of how much your budget corrects by, because should we, should we panic right now? One point six million dollar deficit is something that we don't want to have, that that's going to lead to a, um, especially if it's ongoing deficit, like, like ongoing costs. That you've averaged one point four million between second and the close of the books at the last seven years. And then for those, for those years, the gain was enough to wipe the deficit out that you currently have completely. However, I'm going to give you however, there's a couple of one time costs that you're probably going to have hit your, your unrestricted balance this year. So I think it's about, is it eight hundred thousand or a million dollars?
Cameras?
One point two.
Cameras, one point two.
The cameras are one point two.
Curriculum, eight hundred thousand.
Curriculum.
That's, that's from, not restricted though, it's from.
It's, it's any restricted, so depending on the, the amount that the curriculum e- goes into, curriculum adoption goes into your budget. Because curriculum adoptions happen once every seven years and the ELA adoptions and MAP adoptions are the two expensive ones, the others are less expensive. You want to kind of, it's okay to bring your budget, your balance down, your balance percentage was over forty percent last year, which may be higher than you want. It may not be higher than you want, but if it's higher than you want, the kind of thing you want to use to bring it down is one time spending and spending on cameras would be fine. So if you end up the, at the end of the year with a one point two million dollar deficit and you had one point two million dollars for cameras, that you're not going to buy again, hopefully for many years. Then that's okay, you were really in balance with ongoing spending. But you want to keep an eye on that, um, as you, as you close the books next September. Where, where is it compared to what we want? Is there a problem building? Um, you have a big enough reserve that if there's a half million dollar, two million dollar problem, you have time to fix that. You don't want to have that go on for too long because it can, we'll, it'll, the reserves down to lower than you want, especially with. And I, I, it's almost for me a little terrifying to, it's like swimming in water, it's really deep, is to look at that, that parcel tax, what happens if that parcel tax is not renewed? You want to make sure that that doesn't happen because a twenty percent hit to your budget is, is going to be enormous. Uh, you, you'll be closing schools, having class, class sizes like the rest of us have and, and other things that, that you don't want to do. So another area, and these are just some snapshots of things that. Um, we're look, worth looking at. Going to look at a little spreadsheet about revenues, but your revenues are basically property taxes. So go ahead and. Switch over. If you look at that, there's. Two columns, they're looking at what's in fourth columns, secured and unsecured property taxes. That's your property tax base, it's, it's about twenty nine million dollars of your revenues, it's for unrestricted revenues. Over here, there's a percent gain in the total amount of these revenues, but there's a percent gain in this core, that all the core is, is these two columns.
Did you, I'm sorry, could you tell me, oh, because I, I don't have my glasses, when you see these two columns, can you name them, please? So, okay, F and G. Okay, so, so can you repeat what you just said because I. Okay.
Part that you want to know how it's changing every year, because you need to be able to figure it out, what's going to happen next year, the year after that, the year after that.
What are unsecured property taxes?
Unsecured are when things are not tied down in property, it's like all the plus.
Thank you.
So we have a percent gain. Of the whole thing, and we have a percent gain in the core, which is the, those percentages higher.
And what's a core?
Core is a picture.
Oh, so that's, okay, that's the F and G and what is M? Gain of what?
The whole, the whole picture.
Oh, whole, thank you.
Yeah, I want you to ask those questions to be able to make this.
Percent gain from the previous year.
Correct, percent gain from the previous year. So we're averaging over five percent gain every year on property taxes. So we don't have a budget at two percent gain for next year, that's, that's too low, or three percent gain is probably too low. So my recommendation is to use at least a four percent gain. And then Cory, you're using for next year, a. Four point five percent. Four point five five or something like that, right? Now, the assessor right now is going through and reassessing it. They're, they're, they have a large increase in west of the county, we had a meeting. Of people, mainly new, people have purchased homes recently. This is countywide, this isn't necessarily specific to Mill Valley, but um. Where they maybe purchased a home in the last year or two and values have gone down a little bit, or maybe that, you know, they purchased a home a year and a half ago. And then recently, within the last six months, they, uh, the house two doors down sold for. A, a decent amount less where they want to go and have it reassessed because it's going to lower their property taxes, so. They, they were seeing a large, it was like a ninety seven percent increase in those requests, which they probably had very few requests prior to do that. Right, you want to be careful what you ask for with those things, but, um, so because of that, that four percent, maybe it chills out a little bit. And I think you went to three and a half percent for the out years. Normally I'd say stay with the four, but under those circumstances.
That's a question, though, I think you, I'd be very interested in that disaggregated data. Because Mill Valley is not, Mill Beach is not, Larkspur. So I think it's really important that we know what that, that we disaggregate that data.
Absolutely, so, and, and it will come out eventually, just because the property taxes, what you're saying is, it doesn't look like Mill Valley properties are falling at all. That's, I, when I looked online and did a little online research after I saw, saw an email from Dr. Kaufman, I, I didn't see any evidence that Mill Valley properties are going down. But you want to be a little bit cautious now because of that, sometimes assessors, when they, they're, they're, they're elected. And so you have to be careful about what they might do when they have the opportunity to do it. And so going to a three and a half percent increase for the out years is probably appropriate right now until you, we have evidence that that's not, that there's not a decrease in assessed values. Even if there's, and even if someone's house gets reassessed, doesn't mean that the property taxes are going to fall because their assessed value could fall. But be still higher than what they're actually, their tax basis is. This is a problem thirteen. Anyways, let's go ahead and go to the next one, should we move through here fairly quickly? This has already been touched on, it's really important that you, that you find things to spend that four hundred fifty thousand dollars on. Um, it doesn't show up, it's a part of your property taxes because you're a community funded district, my district, it was all state, almost all state money coming in. But it, uh, we had a lot of supplemental and we had concentration grants, you don't have, you don't get concentration grants, but you get four hundred fifty thousand dollars for the supplemental grants. And the students that generate that, they, that money is for them, for services for them.
I'd, I'd like to say, yes, I think we need to continue to emphasize that and also that should drive presentations next year. Which would be a really great enhancement to our conversation around how we're actually serving those students.
Right.
Track the money, where does it go, show the results, have the kids come, the whole thing.
Uh, another caution on that is that, there are several cautions, but one is that as you implement that, that's four hundred fifty thousand dollars is currently not budgeted. And you may have a lot of money. But your money is all budgeted. And so adding something without taking something else away requires going into deficit spending. So just go throw a caution out there is that anything you add right now, assuming that you come into balance and you're just, your budget's just balanced. It's going to potentially drive you towards deficit spending. So it's just, look at that, let's go to that, special ed. One of the big questions that, I was part of the um, team that was looking at those efficiencies in the district. One of the questions that we didn't really answer to my satisfaction is, is special education costs? Oh, and anytime I talk about special education. Oh, and anytime I talk about special education. The federal government does not provide the money it was supposed to provide for special education, and this is not the fault of the students who are special education students. Because it can be very divisive sounding if you say, well, special ed's taking up all our money. That is not the fault of the students, that is the fault of the federal government, Congress, at the president, senate, House of Representatives. They have historically not done what they promised they would do 40 or 50 years ago. Okay, so you have a problem in special ed, like every district in the state has a problem in special ed because of Congress, not because of special education students. But you do want to make sure that your. Costs are not out, more out of control than anybody else's costs. Costs are, except that because your salaries are higher than other people's salaries, that can drive your special ed costs up. So you have to tease that part out, and it gets very complicated. So it looks to me like you're going to end up, and this is just a guess based on where you are right now, about 70% of your special education budget. Is contribution from the district's unrestricted dollars. The state, I appeared a few years ago to be around 65%. And I don't have more, newer numbers than that, school services should come out later this month with their annual, what it was a couple of years ago, or a year ago. So I think it'll be around 65%. If you're higher than 65%, the question is, is that because your salaries are higher? Your class sizes are lower, or other things like that that you do for students, or is it because. You have more students qualifying for special education than you necessarily need to have, and if that's the case, there's things you can do to control those costs. So let's keep going.
Can I ask a very quick question? Did you get an answer of what percent of our total population is identified special ed?
I do not know that offhand.
I believe it's 17%, but I would need to check.
If it's 17%, then you're high.
Yes, if it's 17%, okay.
That, that's higher than it should be. Higher than it needs to be. So what makes schools here special? Well, of course, after I wrote the slide, I had to add a line saying, of course, it's the teachers and staff and parents and students makes you all special. I'm talking about budgetarily what makes you special. And what makes you special is, it's actually just a fourth item too, I'll add. You, you have, you're community-funded, you get about $5 million more than the state would give you if you were not community-funded. You get about $12 million from a partial tax, and about $2 million a year from a foundation. And you also get. I don't know the dollar amount, but very generous support from your PTAs. Okay, you have a very generous community. Go to the next slide. What is that all paid for? Well, the first thing it pays for is small class sizes. Your class sizes are smaller than class sizes were in my district, considerably smaller. Small schools, your schools are considerably smaller than the schools were in my school district. And in fact, I would tell you that if you were not, did not have that list on the other page, the previous slide, you would be closing two to three of your elementary schools. You have two to three more schools than you really should have, based on standards of California funding now. When I was going through getting all my administrative degrees and all that, I did some research at one point, I, I don't have the articles, I can't tell you where they are, but it's hard, not hard to find. There's a lot of evidence, very, very. Strong evidence that small schools lead to better learning outcomes for kids. So there is nothing wrong with having small schools if you can afford it. I don't want to make you think that I'm thinking it's bad you have small schools, it's fantastic that you have small schools. Because small schools means your principals know your kids. They know them very, very well. You have no combination classes, that's a really good thing, you can't, combination classes are awful for kids.
Oh, I bear, I beg to differ, I was, I've taught combo classes, but I, I mean.
With, with teaching standards is really difficult to teach.
Yes, true, okay.
And rich, you have very rich performing and fine arts offerings. And you have extremely well-compensated staff, which is intentional, it's not that, that you've been taking the cleaners in negotiations, it's you intentionally pay your staff well because. You want them living as close to the district as you can have them, and this is an extremely expensive place to live. Okay, it's not very, very different than where I taught, where I taught, where I was administrator, very different. So putting together a budget committee, and again, you have to be very careful about how you define its role. It's going to increase transparency. If they meet monthly or every other month, you can go through budget reports, you can establish standardized reports that you give them. You can go through a series of topics that we're not going to have time to go through tonight. This is just scratching the surface tonight. It increases the engagement with your partners. Including your labor, including your parent partners. And it increases their understanding. I, I, maybe I'm not naive about things, but I believe that when associations understand district budgets, they don't make unreasonable offers or asks. Or they're more likely to settle for something the district can afford, and not have unrealistic expectations. When foundations know what the district's budget looks like, they're more able to help provide money in the right places. PTA's same thing. It doesn't have to be a board-approved committee, in fact, if it's board-approved, it becomes a Brown Act body, and it's subject to a whole bunch of things I don't think you need to have. Now, now that's entirely your decision, but if Dr. Kaufman were to, can give you a list of names that she's going to appoint, and you can always talk to her if you have concerns, but she can actually appoint the committee. And it can, it can be composed of things like, hey, let's have a parent from each of the schools, or seven schools, right?
Six.
Six plus the middle school?
Five plus.
Five plus middle school, okay. I guess they're not as small as I thought. So six schools, six parents. You can have a foundation member or two. You can have, each of the labor unions have a couple, one or two members on there, you can have a principal or two on there, just to give an administrative perspective. You have classified employees, of course, have somebody on there, or maybe several somebodies. You can compose it however you want. If you get too big, it loses its, gets unwieldy. A dozen people, 15 people. Something like that, enough people that you can spread this information, maybe there's something in the community that really needs to be on there, maybe someone from the city needs to be on there. You have to meet regularly and you have to put the work in. It takes a lot of effort. From the participants as well as from the people who are going to be in. Corey's role, Corey can start it, but he's not going to be here to, to, to go too deep on it. And then finally, three recommendations. It's okay to have a 30% reserve, there's nothing wrong with that. I've advised districts that have bigger reserves than that, but you have to justify it, and it needs to be, in my mind, it should be in board policy if it gets into that range. Yours is current, currently, your last one that you ended the year with was over 40. And you may decide, over 40, you may decide support, that's too much? Or you may decide that's correct, but the partial tax that equals 20% of your budget out there, that buys you a year. Having a 20% reserve buys you a year if that thing fails. If you can get two years, you can get to the next election and try it again. But right now, you're looking at either the 2026 or 2028 election, and you're going to have to start talking pretty soon about when that's going to be. If you go 2026, it's off-year election. Non-presidential election, which means smaller voter base, and I don't know much about, I don't, I know something about Mill Valley, but not enough to, to advise you on that. And not enough about elections to advise you, but presidential elections tend to be stronger for school funding. Than non-presidential elections. That may not matter here because your, your voter base may be very solid, I just don't know. So what, do you want one bite of the apple or two bites before you go into panic mode? If you want two, then 2020, if you want to do it twice, then 2026 is the time. Is the first election. And then finally, property taxing, is already, your, your staff is already doing that, is changing, I think, the way you look at the property taxes a little bit, and going with a little bit less conservative. Approach with that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Christine? Super helpful.
No, that was extremely clear, compelling, and quite frankly. Energizing.
Okay.
Because I think we have a community, you know, we have partner, a partner behind you, a labor partner behind you. And she's smiling, so that, that matters. That matters, that matters.
Biggest thing is to acknowledge that your budget changes during the year and not hide that back, it's not embarrassing that it changes. I read a district's budget, I was superintendent for the same district, our budget changed during the year. We acknowledged it and it improved our relationships with our unions.
I just had a quick question about the jump between the estimated actuals and unaudited actuals, it's really just because we're. We're, we're trying to target what we think we're going to get in in property taxes from that April cycle, but. Or whenever it is that we pay our, our second taxes, but we don't have the numbers in hand until.
It's actually, I don't think it's the property taxes, because by then you should know what they are. I think it's more that. That people unfilled positions, you, you budget for a certain amount for power, and, and the bill's coming a little bit lower, if you're going to err. When you're doing conservative budgeting, and you should do conservative budgeting. You're going to err, guess your, your revenues, if you're going to err, you want to err low. If you're guessing your, or putting in your, your expenditures, you're going to err them high. I'd rather have the, the energy, the power bill come in lower than have it come in higher than I thought, so I'm going to edge it up a little bit. So you're going to save money as you close the books. Now, you can look at it, different CBOs are going to function it differently, and they may not, a, a new CBO may have a smaller jump then, but may have bigger jumps earlier. So it's really the expend, and my, my guess is if you really looked at and analyzed it, and I haven't done that, is that it's the, it's on the expenditure side. That there's positions in the budget that don't get, that are unfilled, that, that are budgeted and they don't get filled. Things like that.
So it's really because of being very conservative throughout the course of the year. In case things change, then that's why we continue to see that large jump.
That jump at the end, yes. It's not a typical, which I'm seeing on your budget development, it's not atypical.
Okay, but that's also, the trending is incredibly helpful, and I think this is probably one of the first times that I'm understanding this as well as I feel like I do now.
So speaking of trending, like this, this chart, is this typical of a basic aid district?
I, I've seen a variety of different things. It's not atypical, but every budget I've looked at, district budget has a fingerprint on it.
Okay.
It's the person running the budget's fingerprint, so. Yours does have some unique characteristics. You have a little, almost like a drop at the beginning sometimes. Like your initial budget is not as accurate as some of the later budgets are, which is typical, but I don't usually see them drop, it usually goes the other way at first. And then you'll see the upward, this upward trend, the ideal budget development is a series of upward steps. At each, at each revision, as I get closer to the truth. I get closer on my revenues, I get closer on my expenditures, my budget steps up each time.
Kind of almost tapering out to a straight line with the ideal.
Almost like a straight line, like, like a, like a. A series of stair steps.
Okay.
With the ideal. So yours has some functions that are not perfectly ideal, but if you understand what it is, you still can make predictions off it and acknowledge it, and it, it serves the same purpose.
Have you done this kind of analysis for any other district in Marin County?
Not from Marin County, I've worked with a couple of, actually three districts in Santa Barbara County, where they were all basic aid districts. And I'm trying to think of that, no, that one's not basic aid, I've had a couple of districts. I'm trying to think of coastal, because districts on the coast are a little different than districts in the Central Valley.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that, I've seen, seen enough that it's. Yeah.
Just that Scott will be here helping us with our budget advisory committee and work over the next year so that we can make sure that we. Are transitioning to our new budget model and also making sure we have transparency and, you know, kind of a third-party referent who is neutral. As we try to move forward, so.
The idea then is to try to transition your new CBO so that they can take the lead role in it.
Wonderful, also.
I'm so grateful for you being here, so thank you.
Yes, and I think it would be great once the committee, just again, this part of the comm focused strategically to, you know. Have him be on, you know, get as much information out about. Who you are, I think everybody in Mill Valley would benefit from your presentation, quite frankly, yeah, so thank you.
Uh, yeah, refreshing, energizing, refreshing, thank you very, very much, really appreciate it. Um, okay, and then now we're. Oh, we have. A few public comments on Measure G, okay. Um, which we will take after the Measure G update. So thank you, team, sorry, we're running late.
We save the best for last.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I thought you were starting. Sitting here looking at things, waiting for me to look up.
Look at them, they're matching and everything.
Please.
They're matching issues. Arms crossed.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much, um, here tonight to give our Measure G update, my name is Julio Royo, Director of Maintenance, Operations, Safety. I'm here with our program manager as well as construction manager, ACOM. Representing ACOM tonight is Brett Mitchell, who's the principal in charge, as well as Sandrine Hitchcock, who's our program manager for Measure G. So the purpose of tonight is to give an update on the middle school as well as the modernizations, which are our elementary school projects for Measure G. And then to give a preliminary overview of upcoming milestones and the different processes we have happening in the middle school project. So the next slide will show our overall Measure G timeline, next slide please. But thank you, uh, will show overall Measure G timeline, and so. It hasn't, it hasn't changed in that where our main goal is coming up to summer of 2025 to build the temp, uh, the temporary housing for the middle school campus. As well as for the summer of 2025 for our, the two elementary school sites that we have. That we're looking to go to the projects, which is. Strawberry Point as well as Tam Valley Elementary. And so one of the things I just wanted to mention, and Sandrine will kind of talk about that in further, is I think one of the big things that have happened since we last talked is. We've held department meetings at the middle school side, and so that's bringing in with the representative, one or two people of each department at the middle school side, be able to gain feedback of. What do they need, what are they, um, the needs that they have in a classroom to be able to build, go over concepts with our architectural team, Leonakis. Um, that whether it's a math team, um, science, our general curriculum. Social studies, music, art, and so all the teams just kind of getting their feedback and understanding like what the needs are. Just showing them different concepts that have been used in other schools that are kind of like the industry standards and can build, building that out so we can then. Bring those, um, get our feedback from our administrators, and then bring that to the steering committee before we break for summer in June. And so really when the team starts digging in in June, but if we can go to the next slide, I'll have Sandrine really go into the different phases we're working on.
So as mentioned, as Julio mentioned, we've been quite busy and we're trying to gather as much information as we can before everybody goes on vacation. So, um, again, we've done a lot of meetings, we're working with Leonakis and Flint. On the interim housing plan and middle school plans, which we will present on July 18th for approval. But also we've been working on the modernizations, which you will see, I believe, on June 12th for approval also. So a lot of things happening. There is an item on the agenda tonight for an addendum to the contract, Flint's contract. I just want to explain that briefly, it has to do with us. Having to split essentially the project in phases and increments so that we can start. The interim housing ahead of the middle school construction. Uh, so it's just a, really a contract, contractual, uh, language change so that we can start accordingly. One thing to mention, uh, and, and we'll bring more information in the next board meetings. Sequel, we've, um, we are, uh, we are doing the archaeological assessment, traffic and noise studies, biological assessments. Uh, and through DTSC, we have had our scoping meeting with DTSC. And have submitted, um, the PEA work plan as of Monday. They have 30 days to get back to us with any comments, and what we're seeing right now. Is essentially being able to do all the sampling and testing over the summer. Again, we'll bring more information and just go over the process and each step, so just to refresh everybody's memory in the next few, few meetings. So modernizations, as I mentioned. We, uh, we are finalizing the schematic design phase for Tam and Strawberry. It is our intent to present or have CK and GCCI present the project. In June to the board for approval. And we are starting the process, the procurement, procurement process for Old Mill and Park. So second set of modernizations. We have sent our request for proposals to the architects that we selected as part of our pool. Uh, and we're, so it's pending receipt of their proposal. So more to come. You've seen that last time, uh, we're trying to update, there will be some updates as we move forward. But essentially, just an overview of the big items. Um, but essentially just an overview of the big items that are coming our way, uh, just to keep things rolling. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, for questions right now? So, on the, um, back to pages. The board agenda decisions and contracts. July eighteenth, middle school interim housing phase one SD approval, is this board seeing anything about what that school looks like before that date?
Yes.
Okay.
So, another item on your agenda tonight is the creation of a subcommittee.
Sorry.
Uh, I believe it's the last item. Um, and the intent is essentially to have the sub, the subcommittee review first. We're intending to have two meetings before the July eighteenth, um, board, uh, review and approval. Uh, the first one will be to review the design and provide feedback, the second will be to review the design and the budget prior to July eighteenth, and all the information, all the information you need in order to get to the July eighteenth board meeting will be provided.
And I'm, I, I apologize because I was supposed to take public comment after the presentation.
Um, I just made the quick, uh, June fifth, I think that should be June sixth.
So we have three public comments. Sorry, there's three public comments, but the, only one of them is on L one, this one's on L two, L one, so we'll take that.
They're all three on L one, and then half of them are on L two, I think as well.
So we'll do it, we'll take these two after the.
I would do Elizabeth, yeah, and Marianne, they're, they wanted both.
Yeah, I know, so we've, we've, we've only done that one, so should I just take this one, and then after that, we take these two?
They, they shall three come on L one, and then the remaining two will also come back for L two.
Oh, I see, wait, but you can't, they're gonna comment on each one.
Separate items.
Thank you. Getting late. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm gonna take some public comment, are these, is everyone online or just Elizabeth? Okay, uh, the first person is Elizabeth Goldstein, if she is ready for a public comment.
Can you hear me?
Uh, Elizabeth, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
She may not be there.
I'm, I'm here, can you hear me?
Okay, uh, Elizabeth, can you hear us? Please speak if you can hear us.
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Well, I'm, she's, um, we'll give her a chance, but we'll call up Juliette Hart and then Miranda O'Connell.
So I'm confused, am I, what am I speaking to? I'm just speaking to L one.
L one.
Even though they sort of mentioned L two, would it help to just say it all at once?
I think that's fine, I don't.
Me, in her three minutes, she just, you're doing both in three minutes?
How about I go until I run out of time, and then if I have to.
Let it.
Yeah, okay.
Let's follow the order of agenda.
Okay, okay, just L one.
Great, thank you, hi, I'm Juliette Hart, I think you all know me by now. Um, I'm gonna do an aside, uh, I love the comments around science, um, it is a key part of our curriculum. And the kids are missing out with not having as much science, I'll say my fifth grader's at Old Mill, there is a garden, but they don't do any garden education. However, they have Ms. Sarah Ferner, who is a rock star scientist, so we, we make it work. Okay, so that fifth grader will be an incoming sixth grader. I've presented before to you on the risks of current and future flooding, I've talked about this a bunch. I've come to you with opportunities to partner on potential studies to really look at this site and think about what we really should be doing at this cer- this site. I've mentioned to you that I'm a climate scientist and I work on sea level rise, part of my work has also been with the governor's office of planning and research, and when I was there, I helped develop state policy on climate safe infrastructure. And for a state agency, they are not gonna build on a site like this because they have to be thinking about up to six feet of sea level rise. So, it's weird with a public school because you are managed by the state architect, right? That's who, that who is who oversees the public school, so I used to work with the previous state architect, I took the liberty of writing to the current state architect because I felt I wanted to have a conversation with her, I sent out a letter and I just wanted you to know that I sent her a letter, I brought all these concerns to her, I talked about the usual stuff that I talk about. I know that there's a current violation right now because some of the landfill material is, is emerging right now. Likely do, I think, to the scour in the drainage channel from all the rains, so I'm not sure if that has been treated yet, I know it was first brought to your attention shortly after you approved, um, the portables on this site and rebuilding, so I think it was like May seventh or March seventh that you got your first notification, that was followed a month later. Where it hadn't been resolved, and then you have, I think, until June eighteenth to resolve it, so I'm not sure what the status is, there's a whole bunch of fencing, so I couldn't go look for myself. So I raised all of this, her response was, thank you for your email, as you've raised some important concerns and some concerning issues. She, you know, uh, also talked about that fifty percent cost piece of it, and what she wrote here was um, that ultimately the choice to fully rehab- rehabilitate or demolish is the district's decision. But, she notes, a full seismic rehabilitation or new construction will require a geo-hazard report and review and approval by the California Geological Survey. I expect that's part of the process that's being done here. And it may be through this reporting and review that the soils will be deemed compromised, and then that would lead to more money, so I'm not sure when in the process that will happen, but it just is sort of this pattern of cart before horse, where a lot of these kinds of tests would be done before a site is selected, and it, with all of the contracts that have been put in place, it feels that the site has been selected without having gone through the process of Sequa that really, you know, you're talking about doing Sequa now, but by default, the site has already been selected. To be continued, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll call up Miranda O'Connell, I don't know if, um. Thank you, well, why don't you come up, please, and then we'll try and get that resolved in three minutes, thank you.
Hi, everyone, um, nice to see you all, I'm Miranda, I'm a practicing attorney here in town and also a, um, mother of three kids in the school district, so I'd like to just start off with gratitude, because I feel like this has been a lot of work and just, um, what seems like the most thankless task of all is figuring out how to effectuate Measure G, so thanks for all your work and all the effort you've put into it so far. Uh, where I'm coming from and, and the reason why I'm here today is, um, the concern is the health and safety of the middle school students and the quality of their education during their time when they're in the portables, which I think is being referred to here as the interim housing. Um, while the school is being rebuilt, um, I wanted to come to express my disagreement with the choice to keep the students on site in the portables during the tear down and construction of the new building. The location is bordered on one side by a large construction site on the other side of the gym, and on the other side by a sewage treatment plant that emits odors throughout the day. The entire site is prone to flood- flooding and rests atop an old landfill with a methane store below ground that requires an active monitoring system. I fear active construction will further exacerbate the risks of those concerns. Apart from the health and safety, I am also concerned about the fumes, the dust and the noise from the construction site and its impact on the students' edu- education in the portables. And I'm here to ask to consider moving the portables to a different location during construction to facilitate the success of instruction during this disruptive time. Um, I just also wanted to flag that I have a rising, um, sixth grader, he was at the end of first grade when COVID shut him down, and I've actively seen the struggles that he and his peers in school at Tam Valley have had, um, over the last couple of years to try and make up for the impact of that. And so I just fear those are, are just all going to get worse if, um, they're in a situation that isn't conducive to learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is Elizabeth Goldman now? Okay, Elizabeth, could you try again, please, and thank you for waiting.
Yeah, of course, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can.
Awesome, thank you. Um, my name's Liz Goldstein, thank you so much for hearing from me tonight. I know all of you have worked, um, very, very hard and spent a significant, significant amount of time and energy considering options for Measure G. So I just wanted to start by acknowledging and appreciating that effort. With that said, I too am concerned by the pro- proposed location of the interim middle school housing that will house students during the two-year construction. Though it will only be a temporary solution, I would appreciate more transparency about the planned portable campus, which sounds like it's coming on July eighteenth. But importantly, I would also like the Board of Trustees to be diligent in exploring other potentially safer locations for the portable campus. The students who will be learning from this campus already had their elementary education interrupt by, interrupted by the pandemic. And I think it is our duty to ensure that the environment we create for their middle school years is conducive to uninterrupted learning. Thank you for your time and dedication to our students.
Thank you very much. Okay, and we're gonna go back to, um, what we, I said, started to ask a question about, um, the other meetings and Sandrine, you said, facilities committee was being formed, and there's a couple of meetings in June for these things, okay, that's what I was wondering.
Part of our, I was just gonna say, part of our goals, because of the way the process is, we really think it's important to have a facility subcommittee, which we'll talk about in the later agenda item, just to be able to update the board also, to be able to preview, uh, information to the board.
Did anybody else have any questions about, no, okay. I was looking at slide six. So according to this slide, which, is that star meaning the end of snow, what is that star?
Us, where we are here.
Um, I'm on page six of, of this, so this is, uh, one more back, sorry, one hundred and sixteen, okay, this one, what is the star? Under design.
Is it not where we are?
That's when we had community meetings, um, the scale was a little small.
Oh, is that?
Community meetings, just more details on all the meetings.
Okay, sorry. Okay. Um, so this is meaning, this dotted red line is today. And so, the end of SD for the interim campus is almost complete, looks like another couple of weeks. Is that correct?
Correct.
So those drawings are done, or they're getting done. Well, I mean, I have in my head what should already be on paper, and it, I'm gonna guess that's where we are. Pretty well developed.
I'll let the architect respond to that question.
Uh, well, they're not here, so. But I guess the question, uh, just going back to that being almost complete, um, can you just quickly tell me what other disciplines and subs have been engaged in that process, so when we see that ending set, uh, coming up, well, we have an idea.
So definitely civil, the civil engineer has been on board since a long time.
Yeah.
Um, I believe MEP, uh, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers have been on board. Uh, structural. Uh, and I'm probably, probably missing one.
Okay.
Um, but yes, the, the full team, architectural and engineering teams have been working on both the interim housing and the middle school.
Okay, so even though today, because the architects aren't here, and, um, you don't have, like, you know, a, a set of printed plans today, or something to share or to even put up, but it's pretty well developed at this point. So, would you agree with that?
It's, it's getting to the.
Getting to being well developed, okay.
Yes, this schematic, yeah, design level.
Right, right, which is outlining where everything is and
Right.
basic circulation and, um,
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And yes, the star should have been to the left of the.
Okay. That's, that was kind of my question on this page, um, did you have something else? No, okay, I was looking to see if anyone else had any comments, okay.
I'm sorry, I had a question, so there is, there are two meetings prior with a committee, is this an appropriate time to ask that question, or do we have that committee officially formed?
It's coming, it's coming up.
Oh, okay, so I'll, I'll hold until.
Well, this is not, I'm not on today's. This is not updated, then, okay.
Oh.
Sorry.
That's why I don't, I don't see it online.
I was.
Okay, to be, to be.
To be, to be dealt with.
Okay, I will wait for my question.
I'm not looking at that agenda either, oh yeah, board operations, M one, okay, um, I'm sorry, just kind of going through all this, um, I think, I think that's it for now, then.
Doesn't require an action, so.
Yeah, thank you, and I think we're gonna go straight, we're gonna go straight into, um, L two.
Okay.
LL, the lease leaseback with Flint.
Yes, so tonight we're requesting approval for the addendum number one for the lease leaseback agreement with Flint, um, who's our construction, our general, our general contractor for the temp campus as well as the new buil- new buildings we're building for the middle school. And so, what we're coming forward today is, um, previously the board approved the fifteen million dollar overall budget for the lease for the temp campus, and so, as we develop, this gives us the opportunity to start planning um, with the idea that the estimated cost is fifteen million dollars, and you, what you'll see in the upcoming board meetings is more uh, definition around the scope of work that's gonna be coming back for board approval, there's different exhibits in this, in this agreement that are not filled out at this point, and then also what the guaranteed maximum price that will come back to the board at a future board meeting as well. As we're developing and going through the environmental process and things are getting refined, we'll be coming back to be able to refine this agreement even more, and all of this will come back to the board for, for more additional approval, but this helps us kind of get the process started of being able to get, um, procure the portables and all that, have you add?
Just wanna clarify, there, there's really no change to like contract amounts or anything, the hundred thirty million that was previously approved, which included the fifteen million, uh, hasn't changed, that's not changing. What this is, um, essentially the, the original lease leaseback contract says you have pre-construction services phase one. And once you get a GMP approved, you can start construction, which is phase two. We needed to change this because we need to start construction of the interim housing before we're done with all the design with all the GMPs, that's why we're breaking down the projects in pieces and trying to get GMPs approved for those pieces as we go. Um, so this is really the intent to change the la- language of the contract to say there's not just phase one and phase two, but you can start phase two A, the interim housing, before you get a fully approved GMP in phase one. So it's really a mechanic, mechanics, um, change to the contract that allows us to proceed with part of the work.
Uh, any questions?
So, that speaks a bit to, to the comments we heard tonight, in my mind, so, and I don't know anything about building. So, we can put the interim housing on there without having some of these approvals like, and I'm, I'm making this up, I don't know what I'm talking about, like Sequa and G, you know, GNP, is that, can you help me understand that?
So the GMP, uh, guaranteed maximum price hasn't, is not a, um, state agency requirement, um, that's, that's really the board and the general contractor. The short answer is no, we cannot start the interim housing, we cannot start any construction until we do all the testing, sampling, reporting with Sequa, with DTSC. Um, and DSA will not give us a permit for, for the interim housing or the main project if we don't have approvals from those agencies, so, I mentioned earlier, our goal would be to start the uh, sampling and testing, uh, on site. This summer, so by end of summer, we should know, uh, essentially what the remediation works look like, and we don't know, uh, what it looks like, but at this point, but we will not be able to continue designing or building or anything until everything is, um, in a report approved by the state, by all the agencies. So, the answer is no, we cannot do anything.
We can plan, though. Which is, yeah.
Thank you.
And, and I, uh, I, I'm sorry, I'm all out of, just combobulated. Yes, that is exactly.
Right now.
She's pointing to me. Okay, I'm sorry, we're gonna take public comment again on the lease leaseback. Did we call this an addendum? What do we call it? Yes, okay. Juliette Hart and Miranda O'Connell again, thank you. Apologies for. Being a little all over the place.
Okay, thank you. Hi again, it's Juliette Hart. Okay, so one thing is June thirteenth, when there's gonna be the community meeting is fifth grade graduation. So those incoming sixth graders that are gonna be impacted by the middle school are gonna be at the dance that several of us are chaperoning and would love to be able to be at that community meeting, so if there's any possibility of rescheduling that, that would be really lovely. Just really quickly, yeah, just to build on what was just said, you know, this is where the architect. Had that comment, you know, maybe through this analysis, all the CEQA work that's supposed to be done. Which is really supposed to be done in advance of choosing a site, which de facto is sort of what has happened in this process. You're supposed to go through a CEQA before you, you pick a site. It may be through all this analysis, right, that, you know, we may need to be looking at deeper foundations, which, which will increase the cost, so this. This is, this is what is feels a little cart before horse, as I said previously. So just for the record, I object to the approval of the proposed amendment to the lease leaseback agreement because the school district has not yet completed CEQA review. Including, including review of potential alternative sites for both the temporary housing and the middle school. The school board cannot lawfully commit itself to construction on a particular site, including construction of temporary or interim facilities without completing CEQA review. I ask that the school board refrain from entering into this proposed amendment, as well as any other contracts or amendments that commit the district as a practical matter to a particular site or alternative for the middle school. Thank you. And I do also really, really appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. Thank you.
And Miranda, do you have another comment on L2?
I'm gonna be really brief, because I'm basically gonna reiterate the same thing, so just also wanted to express an objection to the approval of the amendment. In light of the yet to be completed CEQA review. And especially on the portables, as I mentioned, was kind of my main focus of concern. So I'd really like to just make sure that some of the concerns that I raised earlier have been looked at and addressed and just kind of the risks of them. Also would love to not have that meeting be the ninth, fifth grade graduation and the eighth grade graduation is also that day. Thank you all.
It will be changed.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, now, back, back to design team, thank you. Do we have any other trustee questions or comments?
I'm sorry.
Oh, you turned it off.
I am getting a little tired too, but can. So. We are going to. Be asked to approve this, okay, so. In light of some comments we've received, can you just help me understand what this request is? And how. How it impacts the decision we've already made for the site relevant to. The request we have here. I guess I'm, I'm confused, I need a little clarification before I vote.
Really, it's two different things. We're talking about a contract language that potentially tells them. That tells Flint, you're allowed to start construction on one piece of the project. Before getting approval for the entire project, of the, the price for the entire project. Regardless, we will not be able to start construction on any piece of the project until we go through this full CEQA process, the full DTSC process and all the other one, geological services, DSA. It, it's really two different things. This is just saying you can start early. Regardless, they have to comply with the law and they cannot start, nobody can start construction. Until we go through the CEQA process and all the other required state agencies.
So are we doing that in two parts, one for the, the housing and then one for?
Yes, so if we can go back maybe to the schedule. No worries. Yep, so again, we, because of the, the sequence and we need to move people. We need to build the interim housing first, then move, move everybody to the interim housing, so we can start demolition, so we can start the new middle school. And also because it takes time to go through state agencies, if we break the main project, the main. New building into pieces. Will go faster and we can start getting work done while we get approval for the, the last pieces. So the intent really is to say, this amendment is saying. Instead of doing just one project in one phase, we need to design everything and get approval for everything. We can start doing phase one, so we can get started and move people and keep the schedule going. But again, it doesn't, it doesn't change the fact that we need state agencies approvals before we can even start.
Trustee cats?
I assume. I assume by you guys, and we've talked about this previously, breaking out into these different phases, you didn't just come up with this. For our project, this has been done previously.
Yes.
And there's, so there's precedent.
It really is the nature of school construction, because we really have a small window of time to get a lot of stuff done. And so if you could imagine just what we call tip to tail activities. We don't start one until another one finishes, it prolongs the schedule. And so if the design of this, everything, the new facility, the interim housing, if we didn't start till that was entirely complete. It would prolong the schedule, so we should. Break it up in the slipper case.
And that didn't change the fee, anyone's fee?
It doesn't, the pie doesn't change, we're just taking that small chunk.
The delays cost us money, so.
The delays cost us money, no, for sure, but often when you literally are producing. Four sets of drawings for the same project, you were incurring additional man-hours of labor, you know, so, so it's asking about the fee. Why is there a gap on phase two increment three between DD and CD? It's just a manpower thing? Uh, phase two increment three, there's a gap between DD and CD. Just wondering with the time gap, there's like a few months where, like, it's almost like you're putting the project in the drawer for. A while.
There was a reason and I can't remember.
Okay, I mean, it could be, it could be a staffing thing that the staff is working on.
It might be just that.
Two, and they're not available.
But we'll get back to you.
Okay. Any other? Thank you, I know it was very, very, oh, we need a. We need, I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the addendum number one for the lease leaseback with Flint. Could I, can someone make a motion?
So moved.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you very much, thank you for staying late for us, apologies for the. Taking, taking a little bit longer than normal.
Okay, do I get to just volunteer people for this one?
So the next one, we already have trustee Nakatani on the original committee, this is now an effort to create a true board subcommittee, which will need to be operated under Brown Act and all that, those other agendizing requirements and public comment. But yes, the request is to establish a committee and.
Actually, she, Elizabeth wanted Michelle on.
I, I'm happy, we, we were hoping to have an architect and an educator balancing each other out as we.
I will nominate.
Programmatically, but we need to approve the committee first.
I will nominate Michelle for the second, or I guess I should just do both.
We are approving the committee first, it doesn't, oh, I'm gonna have.
We had to like nominate people?
Nope, just approve the committee.
So we need a motion to approve a committee?
Second.
That was kind of a question, but thank you, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And are there volunteers for the committee?
I'll volunteer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Nakatani was on in December.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
And now I wanted to ask, just, somebody make sure I have those dates.
Yes, once we fix the date for the first, we don't have them yet.
But since it's an official committee, the, that means that the June fifth meeting will be an open meeting?
No, no.
Isn't that a facility, we've, we just made an official.
Board subcommittee, so it absolutely will be if we have a June fifth.
Yeah, we have some proposed dates we'll be sending over tomorrow.
Yeah, we don't have those bits yet.
Sorry, okay, whatever date it is, it's an open meeting.
Correct.
Yes, exactly.
It's a formal meeting, but you guys can still have discussions like without.
Yeah, yeah, it's just that it's unlike the steering committee right now, which is a closed meeting, you know, with the.
And you will figure out a date other than the last day of school for that community meeting.
Yes.
Might be on a Saturday, kidding. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are on to board reports, and would anyone like to volunteer first?
I'm happy to start it real quickly. We had Going Buggy, the adorable second grade performance. It was very cute at Strawberry Point. Really, just everybody did an outstanding job. Kindergarten orientation today, which was also exciting. The kindergarten teachers did a really cute job with that as well. And then continuing to work, the community is working with. Supervisor multi-meters on some traffic improvements that do seem to be making traction, so that's exciting. And I will end with that.
And I had a delightful time reconnecting with teachers at Park School who. Who were invited by Principal O'Connor to come and, and visit, so that was just wonderful and a shout out to the assistants. You know, who are so valued there as in all the other schools, so that, that was great and. Also, I took another step in. Supporting our community by joining the Rotary and actually met the community development. A director for the Redwoods, and so we're very excited about the notion of partnering. And whatever support I can give Dr. Kaufman in creating legs on the plan that we saw tonight. To just create connections, not only for our students, but for our community in terms of what we're doing and. Make, make that, make that more, you know, make that more robust, so I will be. I was officially inducted, I guess, yesterday, but going to a gala in June, so more to report later.
I. Today got to experience a wonderful ten-minute dance performance with the fourth grade at, at Edna. Just a lot of fun, they've been partnering with teachers from PAM to, to come in and so. Love seeing the kids doing, doing their thing and. And frankly, I think having some more. More current music choice. Than some of the, some of the other stuff that we've seen in dance over the years. Also had a site visit at Edna McGuire a couple of weeks ago, and that was really a bucket filling opportunity to go hang out with TK in kindergarten. And the TKers in particular are delightful and just come up and actually kindergartners as well and just hug you unprompted. So if anybody ever needs, needs a little joy in their lives, would recommend checking out a TK or kindergarten classroom. But really what they are doing in those classes is just amazing and seeing, I've been in them previously and seeing the advances. At that, like for that age group, how much they advance in such a short period of time is incredible. And so kudos to the teachers there and everything that they're doing. Also got to spend some time in the garden at Edna. And, and that's been awesome, just getting to, kids are learning about things like. Climate change, how to be good stewards for, for the earth, have seen things around like nature drawings and ornithology and so, so it's been pretty fantastic what those educators have been working on. And got to experience my first MBMS open house. Which I had zero idea what to expect because I know elementary and you go into one classroom and you have one teacher and. And it was actually, it was just so awesome and in, you know, you get to see some of the examples of things that they're doing. I had no idea how much my child was writing throughout the year on different topics. You know, learning about different cultures and religions and. And science, they had like different experiments in the classroom and things posted and so. I think as you become less involved, as your kids get older, you don't always know exactly what's going on, so. So I was really, really pleasantly surprised by just how comprehensive the experience is and what the middle school teachers are doing with the kids, so. Really appreciated that, and I'd say my only point of feedback around the MBMS open house is sharing with parents ahead of time of what to, what to expect. And that you get that kind of experience and then I, you know, I had the pleasure of getting to run into Sarah McKenna and Elizabeth there, so. They've got to show off, show off some stuff there as, as well, so. Bucket filling stuff, now that we've touched a bit of a gap in between meetings.
So I, I did a few things, I did quite a few things, two, two things, like one. Relate, one I was invited to because I'm, you know, trustee, and then the other one was my daughter's high school, but they also, they all have to do with. Screen addiction. And so locally, I went to Screen Sense, put on something just next door at the community center. And the director of Mount Tam K38, you know, just kind of came up with these guidelines and wants to really make them community norms. And, you know, I think we'll look at this again later on this year, we're very busy right now, but there are good guidelines for everyone, frankly. You know, I'm sure people can tailor to their needs, but the more the community as a collective buys into, you know, a, a norm we have for our children is. As they get older, like, don't drink and don't do drugs, right, like, that's like something we try and make as a community norm. So even with screen addictions, we want to make some things like that a community norm with social media apps too, maybe make it a community norm that you don't engage that way. And it's less harmful, it's added sort of. The other one I went to was for my daughter's high school, but it was called Project Reboot, and it's for the upper grades. And I actually shared this with Tam Union too, because it does, you know, our children are growing up and. Again, it's about disconnecting from your screen and the ways you can do that, and he had this chart where it had. It was just a grid of circles, and, you know, he said, if you're eighteen years old today, let's say you live to ninety, all these circles represent just one month of your life. And he has a TED Talk about this, it's fabulous, and he's like, this is sleeping, this is working, this is household chores, this is something. And then this big blank thing at the bottom, he said, this is your free time, and he said, based on how children are today, an eighteen-year-old. How many of these circles is gonna be spent looking at a screen, and it was almost the whole thing. And so that's, that's your free time, you know, it's terrifying, it is terrifying. So I mean, I'll share those links with just the board, but, and again, something we could look at in the future. I went to the seventh grade teachers versus students basketball game here, which was fabulous, that was really great. And I'm impressed by the number of three pointers that were made on both sides, frankly, I didn't, I was blown away. And also E2, the Effectiveness and Efficiency Committee. The county has heard the plea for more help in the food service department. So they are looking at authorizing a grant or, not necessarily a grant, sorry, some monies this summer to study it. Doesn't mean that there's a solution, but it's a step in the right way, because, you know, you've got seventeen school districts, some of them do it themselves. A lot of them like us are contracting out to the lowest responsible bidder. And we're not happy with, you know, what we're necessarily getting, so they've heard it and, you know, hopefully they'll, they'll be able to assist in the future. Baby steps. So with that, I think if there's nothing else, no other future board items, we will adjourn. Okay, thank you, I don't have my glasses on, I can't see, I'm at that point now where I can't see this if I have my glasses on.